Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission meeting for August 4th, 2025. This meeting is being held in both a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom when technology is possible. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak forms to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when your item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have a comment, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make sure our discussion is clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Cammons?
Here.
Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
Commissioner Peake is absent but will be joining us.
No, he's here.
Oh, perfect. You're here.
Hi, Rebecca.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Here.
Chair Leonard?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Could we get everyone to sit down, please, and be quiet? All right. Let's see here. I guess Norm, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
He never does.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue item 3B2. Rebecca, to a date uncertain, is that correct?
So we are removing item 3B2 from the consent calendar and continuing item number 5B to a date uncertain.
So it's totally removed, okay. And to place item 5C before item 5A. The rest of the, as staff recommends.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Now, you may want to explain that to the audience.
Okay, so what we're going to be doing is we're going to be moving the urgent care item to the front of this conditional use permits, or CDPs. That way, everyone that's here to speak will be able to get a chance to do it fairly early instead of waiting till the end of the meeting. Okay? Excuse me? No, we, yeah. We have a lot of people here for trachus also, so, yeah, yeah. All right. Also, everyone, instead of applauding, clapping, if you could just wave your hands if you like, or, yeah, we don't want to, basically, we want to maintain decorum here. Thank you. Okay. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for the meeting was properly posted on July 25th, 2025.
Thank you. Do we have any ceremonial presentations? Nope. Okay. Start off with item 2, written in oral communications from the public, and this is for items that are not on the agenda. We have one speaker, Norm Haney. Would you like to come up, Norm?
Honorable planning commissioners, I'm a very strong advocate for each person that's in the hills here in the city of Malibu to have their own water source, varying between 15,000 gallons and 20,000 gallons. The truth is that the fire department has a long history of approving homes that have their own water source even when they don't have, or, I'll put it another way, especially when they don't have water flow from the municipal sources of water. The reason I'm a strong advocate is because after being here 40 years, it's clear to me that in a wildfire, there simply is no water in the municipal water tanks. The only water that is available is the water that is in a small amount in the fire trucks and the people that have their own water source, whether it's a swimming pool or whether it is a water tank. So in terms of a wildfire, the safest way to go is to have your own source of water, make sure the fire department knows where it is, and that you have an approved draft hydrant with a blue dot in the street so the fire department can see it through the smoke. There are some people that think if you're allowed to do that, Malibu will become overdeveloped, and that's simply not true. The only time that the water department works with the fire department to cause a person to extend a water line is when they are below the pressure zone and within 2,000 feet of a water main. I've done a quick review of those situations. Only a little less than 200 homes would be able to be built with their own water tank inconsistent with the current effort on the part of the fire department to extract money and resources from people trying to build their own home. With that, I'll get into it a little more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Joe?
Thank you. The Zoom was out. You guys were all muted for some reason, but I came in, so here I am. I'm here because Bill Sampson asked me to speak on behalf of Malibu Township Council to say that tonight, for instance, we have taken no position on any consent calendar items and none of the multiple items on the agenda except for item 5B. Anyone who says that MTC is against everything in Malibu is mistaken. We have been advocating for responsible development since 1947 and choose our battles wisely with those that have much public resident opposition and threatens our values in rural, natural character neighborhoods. MTC is one of the most respected and hardworking community organizations in Malibu, and we hope to gain new members over the next few months with all the good work we are doing for the community. And now I'm going to just speak as myself, individual, about my rebuild to give you the update. Tyler is always is amazing. But we are waiting now two months for our geology report to basically tell us that we are on compacted fill, which for generations, the city should know that we are on compacted fill, which we can build on. So this is just a needless delay, a needless study. I mean, if we, if we can instruct the geology team, if the foundation is not, has no cracks and you're going to replace it, it should be fine to build. Nothing, we shouldn't have to wait an extra two months to put it in and then wait for God knows how long, at least 30 days for the geo department to review it. So that's just my little rant for today, but planning is great, so thank you, Tyler. That's it. Thanks so much.
Question.
Yeah.
Is, are you, have you already submitted your SOAS report, or are you waiting to?
I'm still waiting for it.
Okay, so you don't have, it's not because of the city?
No, it's the geologist taking forever, but it's, the requirements are, if he was told not to do, like, to prove that it's compacted fill, because everyone knows it's compacted, otherwise it wouldn't have stayed there for 50 years, then it just seems like a redundant study, that's all.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
There's three raised hands. First is iPhone.
Hello, Kea Harris? Are they muted?
I just see a pop-up. Oh, they're unmuted now.
Kea, go ahead, and you have the floor.
I might be speaking in the wrong portion of the meeting. This is regarding the consent calendar for item number two on the consent calendar.
Do, um, let's go to the next speaker, please.
And for reference, item 3B2 has been removed from the agenda upon approval of the agenda.
Yeah, so we're not going to be covering that tonight, but thank you.
Ryan?
Ryan, are you there?
Ryan, you're unmuted.
We can hear you now.
I show my mic is working. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please speak loudly, though.
Two things, I wanted to encourage you to get with your appointing council persons to try to get the city to hire expert in infrastructure rebuilding, a consulting company. I understand you're bringing on new personnel with some experience with that as a city, but that's not going to take effect until next month, pretty much. So the consolidation of some of the wireless cellphone companies' infrastructure along Pacific Coast Highway will be essential, either on streetlights that will still need to exist on the highway, and that this needs to be part of a scheduled articulated plan for the entire Burn area and possibly further. And we need to convene all of these cellphone companies to meet and figure this out. So that will need the expertise of a radio frequency engineering and a construction-type company. The Willdan Company comes to mind because the city has a lot of experience using that firm, but this is part of the infrastructure rebuild from Woolsey Fire, I'm sorry, from the Franklin Fire, sorry, Palisades Fire, and should be reimbursable expense because this needs to be done, and the safety improvement of undergrounding the wiring and so forth is important. And the last would be that a, the idea of getting onboard and up-to-date with a mass emergency warning notification system along Pacific Coast Highway with whatever limitations it may have, needs to be fully explored, is being explored, and you'll need to keep that in the back of your minds as how those sirens or speakers or amplified system can notify the multiple hazards, including tsunami as well as fire. So we all got a touch of that recently, so I want, thank you for your attention on the two items.
Thank you, Ryan. Is that our last speaker?
There's one more hand. Creation Organic.
Kea Harris?
You're unmuted.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we continued 3B2, so.
So I just, I just want to speak my piece on it, if you guys don't mind. I'm a Palisades, Malibu local. I've lived here my entire life, and being a part of the Malibu community has been an absolute dream of mine. We have been going through a 14-month process with you guys to receive this formula retail clearance, and we are just being sent back and forth between landlord and waste management and this and that, and just to see the allowable formula not be given to us due to a bike company that, as of an hour ago today, apparently stands as formula retail, where we've been fighting for this process for so long, I just, I want to speak on this, and I want to see if you guys have anything to direct me towards or help me out towards, because all we want to do is spread love and positivity and sell juice in Malibu.
I would suggest that you try to reach out to the city and see what they can do for you. It's not, we're basically here to process applications that are on our agenda, but thank you so much. Okay. Community director report? I'll go to that next, okay?
Chair, if you would like to take Commissioner comments, we have a quick technical issue.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Who wants to go first, John?
I want to comment on Norm's comment. Normally, I agree with Norm, but I, a while ago, sent the city council an hour-long documentary on why fires happen, and most of it is incursion into wildlife areas. I have experience with the fire department not using draft hydrants, not going to properties, and so I think that is a very dangerous thing to do. I just want to note to Norm that several, two or three meetings ago, we approved a house without public water above the water line with a tank. I don't know why we did, but we did. Now, I also want to bring up a couple of things. I noticed that the city GIS is no longer available to the public, so I'd like to know why. And the other thing is, I would like to mention that I read the minutes from the prior that we have to approve, and as of May 6th, 2024, we had our staff reports that restaurants that were serving outside of their restaurants needed to get CUPs, and the two of it applied for CUPs. Now, it's over a year later, we haven't seen any CUPs, and we still have a lot of restaurants in parking lots. So I'd like to know if there's anything contemplated to, COVID ended quite a while ago, if there's anything contemplated to legalize that situation. That's my only comments.
Anyone else? You ready, Yolanda?
Yeah. And just in response to planning commissioner Mazza, our GIS is working when it is prompting the applicant to check in, to sign in, but after you check in the box, it will prompt you to, to go into the website. Maybe during the recess, we can spend a little time, and then I can show you.
Okay, they asked for a ID, and I don't have one.
We will go through that. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and planning commissioner members. I have a few announcements for you. I'm very pleased to announce to you that we have a recent reclassified Larvy Azas and Alex de Silva to the position of associate planner. Larvy is here this evening with us. Both of these planners are integral part of our rebuild center, and they have done an amazing job, so I want to make recognition to those members within our planning department, I'm sorry, planning division. We're also announcing the recruitment for assistant community development director, assistant planner, building official, code enforcement manager, and planning manager. All of those recruitment are on our HR webpage on our recruitment announcements. Our Palisades and rebuild update, I, we have close to 95 families that are going through the process on the planning reviews. 39 of them have received approval, and 59, 56 are under review. I'm very glad also to share with the community that we issued the first home on rebuild last Friday and to start construction very soon. We have seven applications under the building plan check, and we're hoping that we can have another two approvals in the next two weeks. We also want to inform the community that we have seen about 332 families come, I'm sorry, more than 590 families coming through the rebuild center. We invite everybody to continue visiting at that rebuild center. We are always open, and from Monday through Friday, from May 2 to 4, you can do a walk-in or have an appointment. Where are we with our Woolsey families? We have recently issued a number 202, a certificate of occupancy to one of our families. We have 102 under construction so that those efforts continue moving forward. For Woolsey Fire rebuilds, you can visit us, our normal counter hours, we are open Tuesdays and Thursdays, but we are extending our hours also Monday through Friday from 8 to 4. And specifically for the planning division, they can come and visit Akash. Upcoming events, this is very exciting for me, too. On Wednesday, we are having a community recovery workshop that is going to be held here at the chamber, at the council chambers. The event will be from 9:00 AM to noon for residents and small businesses owners. The intent is to give an update on the re-removal, but also have a health and wellness speaker. Dr. Katz here that is joining us tonight will be one of our speakers. We will also have information regarding economic aid for homeowners and small business, and in addition, we'll have our fire brigade also doing update. The next event that we would like to promote and ask the small businesses to participate is on August 7. Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation is hosting a small business recovery center pop-up at the Malibu Country Mart from 9 to noon. This will provide financial resources and consultation support to small businesses. We also want to remind to all of our community, we have a Malibu Rebuild Center survey that has been open for about two weeks, and it will be closed on August 15. We ask everybody to take the opportunity to provide us feedback and, and see how we can do better the services that we're providing to the families. We also want to announce that the city council is likely to initiate a zoning tax amendment for ADUs on August 11. Planning Commission will provide recommendations to the city council regarding amendments requested by the state housing and community development office to bring to, on Malibu, into compliance with HCD requirements. And lastly, just for the community to be alert, we are receiving fraudulent emails stating that Planning Commission packages, we've, we, we are requesting funding, so if you receive any of this fraudulent emails, please contact our Director of Public Safety, Susan Duñez. She has taken the lead at creating a report so we can document it with the sheriff's office. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, John. Thank you, Yolanda.
I'd like to welcome the new city manager, Rhonda Perez, and I'd like to dedicate the meeting to her joining the city.
Great.
If we have approval.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. All right. Consent calendar.
To poll 3B3.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, pulling item 3B3.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. We got a presentation on 3B3, please?
May, may I, Sheriff, I may, I'd like to do a roll call vote for item 3B1 because we typically do. Commissioner Peake?
Yep.
Commissioner Cammons?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't need a staff report, I just need to answer some questions on 3B3. If that saves time. Okay, we ready? First, I'm trying to understand how we went from 2,830 square feet to 5,453 square feet without any CDP. It seems like we went, we went to 110%, then 130%, then to 111%, 211% of the original building. How did that happen without the CDP?
So Commissioner, I believe you're referring to, it's a Woolsey Fire rebuild, right?
Right, which is 110%.
Correct. But if you recall, at the time, the council allowed for the two-step process to essentially take place. And so what that meant was, a property could take advantage of not only the rebuild plus 10%, but they could also take advantage of something beyond that. And that's what this application was processed as.
Okay, and the other thing I'm trying to understand is, there's a section in here that says there's a 79 square foot, 79 square foot. Well, there's a bridge going to the adjacent property, but there is no, there's no second floor on the adjacent property. So what does the bridge go to?
Not the adjacent property, but the bridge is connecting the ADU with the main house.
But it goes nowhere.
So it's connecting the ingress, the entrance of the ADU to the main house, and underneath there is a 97 square foot.
Yeah, well, my question is, it doesn't connect to it. There's no place to go. It just goes to the ground. So you can't walk from one house to the other.
So it's counted as square footage because it's more than 60% enclosed, right, Larbi? And so, and it has a solid roof. And so it basically creates like an enclosed area between the first floor portion and the house. And so it's being counted as total development square footage, which is why it's included in your table.
Okay, I understand that. What I don't understand is, what it has to do with the two-thirds rule, because the two-thirds rule would have to do with the second floor, and it apparently, and that would, that would increase the violation of the two-thirds rule to make the second floor bigger.
Go ahead.
The second floor is only a 790 square foot.
Right. So my question is, how does 79 square feet have anything to do with the two-thirds rule?
Well, they're well under the two-thirds.
So.
There is, I'm trying to figure two-thirds of what?
The two-thirds, it's going to be only the 790, which is considered as a second floor, divided by the total for the first floor, which is basically a 710 divided by a 3,856 plus 97, which is almost a 400. It's less than 400. It's a 3,951.
So you're saying because you have a deck that touches the house, that makes the house the first floor?
So on its own, the, let's say that the garage was completely detached from the structure.
Right.
And then they're putting an ADU over the garage. So as a separate structure, it may not comply with the two-thirds rule. So we condition the project so that the bridge, the portion underneath the bridge is fully enclosed. And the definition of enclosed in the code is 60% enclosed. And so as long as it's enclosed, then it counts as TDSF for the entire structure. Now it's a connected structure.
Oh, so the, the area underneath the bridge has walls on it?
Yeah, it's conditioned to demonstrate that. It does have these little walls on it, but it's conditioned so that they demonstrate 60% enclosure to be compliant with that section.
Okay. Now, I would like to, and I don't know if you can do this on a consent item, but all of the pesticide and the landscaping provisions are eliminated. They're not in the, in the resolution. So I'd like to put in the conditions under item 4A, number 42 through 57, which covers the pesticide requirement and the landscaping requirements. This has no language at all that limits the height of landscaping or any ability to comply with it, or any of the things like, no, no this kind of tree, no that kind of tree, no, no mulch next to the house, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all missing. So I'd just like to include those.
I mean, that's fine. The reason it's not included is because there's no landscaping proposed with this project.
I'm sorry, what?
The reason it wasn't included in the first get because there's no landscaping proposed with this project.
Right, but every other house we've done that way, we've restricted it because you can come in with landscaping later, and you can put a palm tree in. There, it doesn't, there's no landscaping plan under 2,500 square feet. So therefore, you could, you could surround the house with palm trees and throw wood chips against your house.
I mean, I don't think so, because it would require a separate review at that time for compliance with the landscape ordinance, and we have checks for that. I mean, if it's, if it's super adamant and this commission wants that, those conditions added, we can, we can add it. You would just have, we'd have to reissue the NOD, which is all.
Well, the reason I'm asking for it is, one of the provisions is that if the landscaping blocks views of the neighbors, it has to be removed. And it's.
John, you're talking about conditions. This is a fire rebuild that doesn't require to have a landscape plan, right?
Well, this particular project has no landscaping involved with it. So there are landscape conditions on the APR and the PV for the house, and we can find those and pull those up if we need to. But again, we didn't add it for this project because there's, it was just an ADU over the second story, it's over the garage. There was no landscaping involved with this application.
As far as I could tell, there's no landscaping, and then no provisions on the house.
We can look into it, but I mean, like I said, it's an NOD that was issued. If it's that, if we want to be that clear, we can require the NOD to be reissued if that's an issue. But the landscaping is taken care of.
Well, the reason why I do this is, I've noticed in the last couple of months, you've added new provisions that say if you have a violation three times, you can whack it, okay? They have to take it down. If you, if you put up a 15-foot hedge or trees that block primary views, compliance doesn't have to go through a lawsuit or something to get it complied with. And that's missing from this particular house. And I'm trying to stop, I want to give you credit for putting in the provisions, which these 13 provisions mean nothing, other than the fact that compliance no longer has to go through an extraordinary, extraordinarily hard process to ensure compliance. But if you don't want to do it, you don't want to do it. I hope they're in all the other conditions, but these are.
They usually are.
The LIP says if you build a house, if you get a CDP, you must have a landscaping plan.
And to your point, Commissioner, they are in new single-family home applications, which is probably why you're used to seeing them in CDPs. You'll see them in some of the applications tonight. Again, this was a very minor project just for an ADU, and so we don't just always require it for every project if it's not applicable.
So you are telling me that the house itself has these requirements?
We'll have to double-check, but the APR should, if the APR proposed landscaping, it should have had these requirements, yeah.
The APR has all the conditions for the landscaping, APRWF.
And do they have the pesticide requirements? Because I didn't see those either. They had the dark sky, but not the pesticide?
Did you look at the original?
I don't have the original.
Okay. He says it hasn't.
It has the pesticide in the original?
The original APR?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to approve item 3B3?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we have to do a roll call?
That's a receive and file, so you could do that by unanimous consensus or by consensus.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, so we're on to 4. 4A. Okay. Item 4A, it's a CDP number 15-046, with a mitigated negative declaration, lot merger, and minor modification. It's an application for a lot merger between three vacant lots, a new single-story family residence, and associated development with a minor modification for a reduction in the front yard setbacks. The address of this is 3,180 Broad Beach Road and 3,114 Broad Beach Road and 31,817 Seafill Drive. Any disclosures?
I visited the site with our chair. I forget what day last week.
Wednesday?
Wednesday. I observed the story poles and the configuration between Seafill and Broad Beach Road.
I drove by the site before the story poles were up, but it wasn't necessary to see them.
Morning?
No disclosures.
Okay. I drove by with Commissioner Peak last week, and no, no real findings.
No disclosures.
Okay. Do we have a presentation for this?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Leonard, members of the planning commission. I'll be presenting this one tonight. Oh, thanks, sir. So as mentioned, this is a coastal development permit with a mitigated negative declaration, lot merger, and a minor modification for a reduced front yard setback. So this project is located just south of Broad Beach Road. There are currently three vacant parcels that are about .08 acres in size, and this application proposes a lot merger of those three parcels to make one parcel that will be roughly a quarter acre in size. Just some background, as you could tell, this is an old application from 2015. And so I just wanted to provide some background about, you know, the process and how we got here. So prior to 2008, there was a Phase 1 archaeological study that determined that there could be the presence of cultural resources on the site, and recommended that a Phase 2 archaeological study be done. And that was done on July 11, 2008, prepared by CA, Singer &amp; Associates. And that Phase 2 study determined that there were cultural resources on site just underneath the surface, and that further evaluation of cultural resources should be required. The applicant submitted the subject application before you tonight in June of 2015 for the new single-family residence and the lot mergers. And then on January 6, 2023, a Phase 3 archaeological recovery plan was prepared by Invicom Corporation and was submitted to the city by the applicant. This 2023 recovery plan included analysis from the 2008 Singer Report and also analyzed further, which was also analyzed further in the initial study and the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared by the City of Malibu as the lead agency under CEQA. So just a little bit into the CEQA process on this, on this project. So on May 29, 2025, the city made the initial study and the mitigated negative declaration available to the public for the required 30-day circulation period. And that review period was from May 30 to June 30, 2025. State clearinghouse number is up there for your review. There are four pieces of correspondence received during the CEQA process, the public correspondence process, and that was from the LA County Fire Department, who really had no issues. The LA Regional Water Quality Control Board, which proposed some extra conditions related to water quality, which were added to the resolution tonight. Some conditions from Caltrans, which again were added, related to highway safety, which were added to the resolution tonight. And then there was also some correspondence received from the adjacent neighbor at 31820 Broad Beach Road, who has some concerns about the project. We won't get into that in a little bit. Further, going into what would be required if the planning commission were to approve this tonight, in your resolution, you'll see that conditions were added specifically based on the MND that was studied. And these conditions are really to really protect the cultural resources that may be on site. So just kind of a snapshot here of those extra conditions. Both a certified archaeologist and a Native American monitor from the Chumash or Tongva tribal groups are required to be present during the construction process. And then if there are cultural resources found, they will be removed from the site appropriately, and reporting would be required from the principal archaeologist to the city throughout the construction process. And then if human remains are discovered, the construction will have to cease until the county coroner can review. Getting into the project itself, so it's a construction of a new 1,954-square-foot home, 18 feet tall. It's a, there's a 420-square-foot attached garage, a 1,084-square-foot basement, including a 96-square-foot light well, a total development square footage of 2,512 square feet. There's some grading, retaining walls, a new driveway, installation of an onsite wastewater treatment system, and some new landscaping. There's also a lot merger of the three parcels we mentioned earlier, and a minor modification for a reduction in the front yard setback. Here's just a snapshot of the three existing lots. Again, all three are about .08 acres in size. Here is the proposed site plan that made it into your agenda packet. The, if you recall in your resolution tonight, there is a requirement for a view corridor being, for this site being south of Broad Beach Road. There really is no views of the ocean from Broad Beach Road, but the LIP still requires that a view corridor be provided. And this could be in case that a view corridor opens up in the future. At least this property will have a view corridor provided as required by the LCP. And so this is a proposed site plan by the applicant submitted last week that shows that 26.1-foot view corridor requirement on the, on the east side of the property. And then he moved the two unenclosed parking spaces to a different location, because you cannot park within the view corridor. Just one quick proposed amendment than what you see in your resolution tonight. We originally documented that a 35% reduction of the front yard setback is necessary after reviewing his final site plan with the view corridor. It was seen, nothing changed on the plan, but the actual request is for 43% reduction of the front yard setback. The notice that went out was for up to 50. So we're still in line with what went out in the notice. The house is proposed to be 18 feet tall, which is compliant with the LIP height requirements for non-beachfront. And here's some photos of the story poles that we saw on site. So the one to the left is if you're on Broad Beach Road looking south towards the ocean, you can't see the ocean because there's existing development in the back there. And then the other one to the right is from Seafill Drive as you look north towards the Santa Monica Mountains. The neighbor that has the concern is that white house there, 31820 Broad Beach, and there's some concerns that they have related to some view impacts. This project is 18 feet tall, and so some of the primary view determination protections do not apply to this project. Still, to try to alleviate some of those concerns, we did place a condition related to no furniture being allowed on the rooftop deck taller than 18 feet. Actually, request to amend that for, to add even further protection for the neighbor, so that no, no rooftop furniture can be taller than the height of the railing and parapet, which will be an even lower height, and help protect even more views for the neighbor. So our recommendation is to adopt the initial study, adopt the mitigated declaration, and approve the CDP and the minor modification as amended. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is this why I opened the hearing now? Okay, let's go ahead. We're gonna do the applicant's presentation. Fabrice Esamomoch? Excuse me if I butchered that? Yes?
I have the petition properly. Do I get this off?
Not yet. It's the applicant first, and then you can go after.
Okay.
Advocate first?
Good afternoon, or good evening, honorable members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Bozi, and I'm here on behalf of our project located at 3,100, 31800 Broad Beach Road. I want to take a. I want to take a moment to share the long and challenging history we've experienced while trying to bring this project to completion. We began this project in March of 2015. Since then, we had worked continuously with the City of Malibu to meet the requirement and move the project forward. However, the journey has been far from smooth. Over the years, we had three different city planners assigned to our application. Each time a new planner took over, we were told the review needed to be started over the previous pre-approved or approved items. This, this repeated restarting added years to our timeline. The process was further delayed by unforeseen circumstances, including the Wusli fire, which understandably shifted the city focus toward recovering the rebuild effort. Throughout this period, we remain patient and cooperative. We, we responded to feedback, revised our building plans, and comply fully with the City of Malibu requirement. I like to emphasize that the height of our purpose structure is fully within the city guideline, and it will not obstruct the view of any neighbors, neighboring property. We've been mindful to design responsibly and respectfully within Malibu standards. After many years of waiting, I want to sincerely thank Mr. Tyler Eaton, who has helped move things forward. His involvement and responsiveness have made a noticeable difference, and we truly appreciate his effort. We are simply asking to bring this project now nearly a decade in the making across the finish line. We are not seeking a special treatment, only fairness and closure after years of navigating and challenging and ever-challenging review process. Thank you for your time, for your dedication to the community, and for considering our request today.
You have 11 minutes and 45 seconds. Would you like to retain that?
I'd like to keep that, yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Paul Grisandi. Wrong item? Okay. Herbert Wolf? Woolis? Woolis?
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the potential builder because I've been looking at that ugly, unbuilt lot for 42 years, which has weeds on it all the time. It's always a fire hazard. So I'm glad that somebody's gonna build a nice home on it. I have just two objections. They're small, but they affect my particular home. First of all, I believe that the building line is much too close to the, our building line. I think they're, they're using six feet. I think 20 feet would be appropriate because to have house close, so closely together when there is all that space makes no sense. So that is the first objection I have. The second objection I have is the story polls. Tyler was not able to enter our house to take pictures of the story polls. I have taken pictures of the story polls, and I think that some of them are just a little bit too high. And to reduce some of them from 18 to 14 feet would be, would make more sense and be more beneficial to both them and to my particular home. Other than that, I welcome the builder and the owner, and I wish them as much good luck as we have had with our home. And I hope that my suggestions are at least listened to. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Gonna go ahead and close the hearing?
If the applicant would like to respond?
Do something to that? No. Sorry, guys. Do we have, do we have speakers on Zoom also?
There's no raised hands.
According to the survey that we have, my neighbor's building is five feet, five and a half feet away from the property line. My building is gonna be nine feet and three inch away from the property line. So I, I am farther away from the property line than his property is. When he stand on his second-floor balcony, he sees the roof of my, my property. Means his property is much higher than my property. So I don't know what's the problem.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing and... Let's go ahead. John Walker first?
I just have a couple of questions. I forgot to mention in my disclosures that I did ask Tyler a question about Plan C-2, which I forgot to get an answer for. And my only question is, there's, in the, in the upper left-hand corner of the house, it appears that some structures go over the dotted line, which I understand is some kind of easement. And I just wondered what those are. They seem to be part of a bedroom. Or I just don't know what that is. And I just wondered if that, I don't know what that dotted line is, but I assume it's a, it's an easement. And if so, if it is a structure, I assume that the fire department walk around it has no effect, but I'm just wondering if it's in, in a, in a non-allowable space.
So we're looking at the grading plan, C-2. It's page 47 of your packet. Is that correct? The dotted line that is really adjacent to the house is a utility easement, I believe, that's on, on the plan. And so he is avoiding, the applicant is avoiding that utility easement. That's why there's a pretty wide rectangle there between Broad Beach Road and that other dotted line, which is the house.
So that, that little rectangular thing that sticks over that line is, is something that isn't, isn't a structure?
I mean, if I'm looking at the same plan you are, maybe I need to go check it out, or we can put it on the screen. But I'm not seeing a rectangular structure.
There's, there's a wall also. So maybe if you could put it up, I can point it out.
It looks, it looks like a duck, maybe?
Bozzi, can I call you to the... Sorry, I just wanted to clarify something. Parker, if you have it, it's page 47 of the...
Your 47?
Staff report. Well, yeah. Go to a couple of slides back. Yeah, this one I think should do. Right. So he's talking about on the, I guess it would be the north side where number two is in the box? See it? I see what you're saying, but can we, is it possible to pull up page 47 of the staff report?
Would you like to mind coming up to the mic again? What was his name?
On the key that's labeled the names.
You know the project better than I, so I figure it's better.
Tyler, on the key, it's labeled it as an existing contour line.
It's square. How can it be a contour line?
You're talking about the dotted line that goes all the way across?
There is a, there is a note on there to remove and recompact, so it probably, it could be a grading line. It's on the grading plan. We're gonna pull it up for you. On C-3, it shows the easement, but then there's another dotted line that jogs in, and part of the structure appears to overlap. There is a note that it says remove and recompact. And so I, I think it's associated with the grading.
Okay, that's for the grading. So over ex, over excavation line?
Yes.
Yeah, see, I think, I think it's probably an error on the drawing because of the drawing I'm looking at. The dotted line goes through that, that little rectangle below the dotted line on that plan. So, and, and it's, I don't know if it's just a, it's stamped and everything, but it's not the same plan you're showing. So this is the plans we were given. I assume that they're an error. I just wanna make sure.
No, I think it's not an error. It's just that you're trying to, you're using the grading plan for verifying placement of the house.
Well, yeah, the house is on it.
Yeah, but it's just a little confusing. Using that, using that page for that.
Okay. I don't think it's a big deal, but you may wanna check that in reality. Now, I'm wondering why Condition 58 and 59 are in there since Conditions 20 through 28 cover the same subject. And I just think they're redundant, but I don't know why. Because 20 through 28 are exactly the same subject with, with that type of stuff in it. So that, that could be eliminated if you wanna simplify. I guess you could say it twice if you want.
It's listed twice because one of them includes the structure, one of them includes the landscaping.
But they both include both.
Well, it's just being very clear that even if there's lighting out in your landscape...
Yeah, that's not a big deal. Now, the other thing I'm wondering is, there doesn't appear to be a traffic mitigation condition, which in that neighborhood, that's the main street going through Broad Beach and the side street. So I think that might be something we should put in the conditions, unless I missed it somewhere. I, I read them twice, but...
So we, we have a construction management plan, which require, requirement, that's 33. And that shall require a dedicated parking location for construction workers not within the public right-of-way.
Okay, so that's my, my error. Okay, then my last question is, what is the front of, what is considered the front of the house?
Yeah, that's my question, too.
There's a, there's a five-foot wall on one of the plans on Broad Beach Road, and it may be a temporary wall. I can't tell. I would assume that the other road is the front of the house, but I'm not sure because it doesn't show, it doesn't show any fences.
For this project, because he's taking ingress, ingress from Seafill Drive there through that driveway, that curved line was the front property line, and it created, it creates what's called a gore-shaped lot, like a triangle lot. And so the two sides that make the, the right angle, the triangle, are side yards, and then the, the rounded line on Seafill Drive is the front yard.
So that's restricted to 42 inches under the code, right?
Yes.
That is, those are my questions. If nobody else has any, I'll make a motion to approve.
I, I do have one or two questions. Just for clarity for the neighbor, what is the rear set, setback on the house?
So the setback in question is actually a side yard setback. It's 9.3, which is the minimum required on that side.
Okay. And does the neighbor have a reduction in side yard setback on his property? That was existing non-conforming, or?
It's an existing non-conforming. It was built before cityhood.
Okay. I'll go ahead and second John's motion.
I just wanna say, what a journey. I mean, what an incredible journey over 10 years of archaeological studies and plans and delays. I mean, wow, what a dedicated person to continue that effort. So, you know, I really, I commend you. That is something. I don't have any questions for you. I did hear what the neighbor said, but, you know, you did get to a clean sheet project, and you stayed within all of the bumpers, and I, I wanna acknowledge that. And so it makes it much easier when we're up here. And thanks, John, for the detail. So that's all I have to say. And I would second that or third it.
We have a roll call, please?
Yes. And just for a point of clarification, our motion is to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2558 as amended, number one, modifying the reduction of the required front yard setback to 43% in the resolution title in Section 3, Paragraph 1, in Finding B, and in Condition Number 2, modifying Condition Number 102 to state no furniture or other attachment, whether temporary or fixed, may be placed on the deck nearest the ocean taller than the height of the railing or parapet. And three, adopting Initial Study Number 18002, mitigated negative declaration Number 18003, and approving coastal development permit Number 15-046 as stated in the agenda. And for roll call, Commissioner Maza?
Yes, that is my motion, yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Cammons?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We're gonna move on to 4B. This is a conditional use permit, 25-002, an application to permanently authorize 15 annual events at Tranqus Country Market Shopping Center, which is, consists of live music performances with an estimated attendance of 350 people at each event. This was continued from July 21, 2025. Do we have a staff report for this, please?
Good evening, Chair Leonard and members of the Planning Commission. I wanna take this moment to reintroduce myself to the commission. My name is Didier Murillo, and I recently returned back to the city six months ago. Have to work in somewhere else for three years. So the request before you is conditional use permit Number 25-002, located at 307 and 30811 Pacific Coast Highway, to permanently authorize 15 annual events at the Tranqus Country Market Shopping Center, which consists of live music performances with estimated attendance of 350 people at each event. Here we have a vicinity map. The project is located in the Community Commercial zoning district. The property is bordered by Pacific Coast Highway to the south and Tranqus Canyon Road to the west. The subject property is bordered by a mix of residential and private recreational facilities south of Pacific Coast Highway with residentially zoned properties to the north, east, and west. A bit of a project background. Previously, the Planning Commission approved Resolution Number 24-07, approving conditional use permit number eighteen dash zero zero three, which had a sunset clause of October first, two thousand twenty-four. To date, the applicant has secured five out of the possible sixty UPs. Correction, this was what was published in the original agenda, which was supposed to be heard on July twenty-first. So at the time of publishing of the agenda, they had five out of sixty UPs, dating from May twenty-third through July twenty-fifth for approximately three hundred attendees. As noted in the staff report, co-employment staff was present at the events from May twenty-third through July fourth. No major issues to report and no complaints received by the city. After publishing of the original agenda, correspondence was received by the applicant, which was submitted by the applicant, and they were requesting modifications to conditions of approval. And those have been updated in these cover report that you received with this agenda. And they were seeking modifications to the event schedule, number of attendees, advertisement, alcohol service, site lighting, and conditional use permit, non-use. And again, as mentioned before, this item was continued from the July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission hearing. And since that, the applicant has secured their sixth and final TUP for this year for events taking place on August twenty-second and August twenty-ninth. Here we have an image of the, of the event space. What you see in the red arrow, the red star, is where the live concerts are being held. So the project, the proposed application is requesting approval of a permanent CUP to allow fifteen annual events in the form of amplified live music performances. Again, this is essentially a carbon copy of what was previously approved, with the exception that the previous CUP had the sunset clause. And with this application, they're requesting to make this a permanent CUP. The proposed events would include live music performances on Fridays from six P M. to nine P M. with varied monthly occurrences and a maximum of three hundred attendees. No outside food or drinks will be sold at the event beyond the leaseholding tenants. Here we have the project parking shown at Lot A, Lot B, and Lot C. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number twenty-five dash sixty, determining the project is categorically exempt from CEQA, and approving conditional use permit number twenty-five dash zero zero two to permanently authorize fifteen annual events consisting of live music performances with estimated attendance of three hundred and fifty people at each event at the Trancais Country Market Shopping Center, located in the Community Commercial zoning district at three zero seven forty-five and three zero eight eleven Pacific Coast Highway. With that, that concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have.
Questions of staff before we open the conference? Okay, disclosures first? Any?
I've been to a handful of the events and it seemed like the community really enjoys them. It's my disclosure.
Yeah, I've, I've been to events and I also walked the property a couple of days ago. Oh, one more thing. I had originally scheduled something that couldn't happen, which was walking it with Marnie. So we did discuss the staff report.
I too have been to events. There.
I've been to events there. I also live in Malibu West. I think I recused myself from one of the hearings. Okay. I do live over five hundred feet away. I think I feel comfortable going forward with this tonight.
I, I've been to events there too. I just want to say I do live in Malibu West and I have been to many events there and it's so far, it's really been delightful community events. So I will say that.
Chair? I also received a phone call from Pat Healy today voicing concern over the events and suggesting that we keep it the way that it is for whatever it's worth.
Yeah, that was what I, I had questions for staff in regards to what, what we approved last year.
Got it. Well, let's go forward and go further.
Is it, could we, should we discuss that now or before the presentation? What we approved last year? After? Okay. Okay. All right. Ken, you want, come on up and give your presentation? Okay, yeah, anyone that's going to be speaking, if you could kind of come towards the front, please? Now that we started public speaking, can we cut off the, any more Zoom app calls at this point? Thank you.
Chair Leonard, Vice Chair Riddick, and the members of the Planning Commission, my name is Ken Ehrlich of Elkins Cult. I'm here with my partner, Jackson McNeil. We've both been to events, many events, we disclose ourselves, and have been involved in the centers project for a number of years and are happy to present to you tonight. We're also here with Mike McAndrews, the entire manager for the entire center, as well as Adrian Caso, who is the Trancais Vintage Grocers manager and director as well. I also want to call out and thank Didier for being, really getting up to speed on this project very, very quickly. To my knowledge, he's never worked on it before. This project has a lot of history and he's become very expert very quickly. And we thank him for his responsiveness to all of our questions, concerns in the entire process. So we're, we're seeking a permanent authorization after what I'll call a probationary period for having concerts at the center over the summer and then less frequently over the winter. To us, they provide, and, and the ones I've been to, I mean, I could speak from personal knowledge and also just secondhand hearing from the community that the community benefits, the community enjoys it, the community likes coming out and seeing each other. It's become a social event and it's a great vibe for kids and entire families. We have multiple conditions to mitigate any potential negative effects of the, of the concerts. We believe we've addressed all of them. We're happy to entertain questions and comments about them. So the concerts, as previously stated, go throughout the summer from six to nine. They're done by nine. So it's not as if we're up against any type of late, type of curfew. We're asking for occasional holiday concerts, caroling, et cetera, near Christmas time, and one event per every three weeks in the non-summer months. And that's new, Chair. That's, that's previously permitted under last year's was fifteen events during the summer only and all under TUPs. And we, there, there have been testimony before the, the commission before about the number of attendees. We've counted on an hourly basis and our counts have never exceeded three hundred. We, we've talked to staff, we've talked to others and are asking for an entitlement to go up to three fifty simply because, because we think the area not only can command that, we have restroom, security for all that. But in the event that there's an issue, we really think that that's an appropriate ceiling. We're happy to, to work with the city through some sort of objective measure to count and give official counts, for example, the ones that we get, if that becomes an issue. I just wanted to be transparent about it. So the, the number of attendees shouldn't become an issue. I think everyone knows the area of the center where the concerts are held. This, this goes into the long history and the intense study that's been done over the years. I'm happy to address those if there's any questions. We, we do have sheriffs notified of, and our own security as well during the events. We're here now seeking a conditional use permit. The, the temporary use permits from our perspective frankly are cumbersome, expensive, and they, they involve frankly too much of your time and staff time. We're, we're happy to get a longer entitlement, have strict conditions and periodic check-ins or reports, whatever. But to go through this entire process every year when frankly there aren't any substantive concerns and the issues seem to become the number of events, sometimes overflow parking, we were told gets into Malibu West, but we have people handling that as well. We, we just think we, we've, we've sort of gotten into routine. We think we have it down. We think we're complying and we're happy to work with the city to make a more reasonable, longer-term commitment to each other. These are our concerns with the individual conditions. I mean, I think they're fairly vetted and worked through. I don't really sense a need to, to go through them individually unless questioned about them. The one thing I will say is in the dark sky condition in number twenty-seven, it seems, it, it seems like it could be more fairly written because it appears that there's any night sky violation anywhere in the center, not necessarily caused by the events, that those get somehow bootstrapped and give the city the, the power to somehow enforce against the events, which doesn't feel fair. I, I, we, we went over and, and we went over city's response. It's, it's not an issue we're going to dwell on. We just wanted to highlight it here. The non-use also appears to potentially enforce against us or have negative effects to us, the applicant, if we don't have events. When it, it sort of seems contrary to the comments, which are saying maybe you're having too much, too many events. And it seems as if, you know, we don't want to be in a non-use type of nonconformance simply because we're not holding events in the off-season, for example. Again, we think we've addressed all the concerns. I'm happy to address them again. I'm trying to go through this so I can reserve time and be as efficient as possible tonight. We will remember a year ago, the, the staff actually developed a request for seventy-five events. We're nowhere near that. We're down to the same fifteen or, or one per week from Memorial Day through Labor Day with one event per three weeks in the off-season. These are all different ways of saying the same thing. The TUP issue, we, I think we've addressed and I'm happy to address the, compare and contrast them further if the commission is interested. Parking isn't an, an issue. We have fifty-four more parking spaces than we are required to have. And we also have staff directing people to park in the onsite lots and not into Malibu West. And I've seen the signs myself and the, the barricades put up of Trancais Canyon Road. Noise study, noise concerns, I think we've addressed all that. No one's complained about noise. We'd like to get the entitlement requested. We're happy to discuss the term. We understand thirty seconds or less to, to, talking about the term itself. We understand the complaints that, and the concerns that the city doesn't have official or regulator, regular enforcement mechanisms for CUPs. So once you get it, it's sort of an entitlement that you have forever. We don't look at it that way, frankly. I mean, we're self-policing, number one. Number two, we had staff from the city there all last year at every single event. We welcome that type of oversight moving forward and are happy to remain compliant with the conditions that this commission may impose. So we, we think that's sufficient. We think there are sufficient enforcement measures. We're happy to discuss others if they're appropriate. Thank you very much for your time. I'd like to reserve the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ken. Tracy? Anyone that filled out speaker cards if you could be ready to go, okay?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Wirick and I'm the HOA manager for the Malibu West Swimming Club. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors who represents two hundred and thirty-eight families directly adjacent to the Trancais Country Market. First, our members value these events, which bring joy to the community and many fond memories. However, these summer concerts should be thoroughly managed and respectful of nearby residents. We're not opposing concerts. We're asking for transparency, accountability, and balance. Under Malibu Municipal Code Section, concerts not held at dedicated event venues require a TUP. While we understand the shopping center's desire for more than six TUPs per year and accept that these summer concerts host over three hundred and fifty people, granting a permanent CUP for fifteen concerts indefinitely without further public review is not acceptable. Instead, we support an annual temporary CUP for up to fifteen summer concerts from Memorial Day to Labor Day. This approach ensures ongoing community feedback and allows the city to assess compliance and conditions year to year. Furthermore, any consideration of events beyond those fifteen summer concerts must account for the total volume of other public events already taking place in Western Malibu. Cumulative impacts on traffic, parking, and noise must be weighed carefully. This is not a request to cancel the summer concerts. It's a reasonable request for balance and oversight. We respectfully urge the commission to deny the permanent CUP, keep the limit to fifteen summer concerts per year, and adopt an annual review process. Thank you for your time and thoughtful attention to the concerns of Malibu West. Thank you.
Thank you for being prompt. Okay, go ahead.
I just want to disclose for transparency that my husband does sit on the board of Malibu West.
All right, next we have Pat Healy? Okay, and then after that, we're going to do Joe and then Paul Grazani. So if you guys could be ready, please?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth. Slow Growth currently is in favor of the fifteen Friday night summer concerts. Since the TV process currently allows only six summer concerts, the shopping center is applying for a permanent conditional use permit, which will allow from in perpetuity fifteen summer concerts events, approximately eighteen to twenty more off-season concerts. A permanent CUP is a bad idea since this shopping center is surrounded by residences. There are too many unknowns to grant a permanent CUP and the negative impact of year-round events will be far too great of a burden on the residents. With a permanent CUP, residents will lose their right to comment on the events in case circumstances change and these events become a nuisance and need to be modified. Residents should always have the right to address their elected officials to, to express their concerns and seek conditions to alleviate the problem without seeking a revocation of a CUP. We therefore ask you to allow fifteen concerts under a temporary CUP for the summer concert season this year and thereafter and deny non-summer concerts. In this way, the popular summer concerts can continue and residents' concerns can be heard and modifications can be made. Also, last year, the concerts allowed three hundred. Trancais is asking to have three fifty because there were more than three hundred attendees reported to the city last year. We recommend that the number of attendees remain at three hundred and Trancais finds a way to keep the attendance at that level so as not to create a greater parking and noise nuisance to the residents. Trancais is asking for the right to advertise the concerts on social media, including TikTok. This request was denied last year. And if this is allowed, the concerts will no longer be resident-serving since, and since they are free, they will create more attendees than what the area can handle with no guarantee who the attendees will be and that the concerts will remain peaceful. So please deny this request. Last year, there was a requirement that a sheriff or city official be onsite to monitor the contracts and to report back to the city. And, and the applicant would pay the cost. We request that this continue to be a mandatory condition. They're asking to, to sort of water it down and not make it mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Paul? Or, I'm sorry, Joe?
Hi, I'm here as an individual who goes, attends these concerts regularly. We love them. There's four thousand three hundred families in Malibu. So this is almost ten percent come to these concerts every week. If there is a way to do two temporary, I, I, I think thirty concerts is fine per year, but I don't live in the area. So sorry for my, Pat, I, I respect Pat so much. So what, I mean, do what's, do what you think is right, but I love them and I know at least ten percent of the community comes. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Paul?
Hi, I too have attended the concerts because I live in Malibu West. And all of my neighbors, with the exception of Pat, seem to love them. And I don't hear many complaints. I enjoy going there and seeing the people who bring their children and they're having a great time. The kids on the dance floor are a sight for sore eyes. And I think that what the center has done is wonderful. And it's a model that we would love to see at other public places around the community. Right now, I'm very grateful to be there and be able to attend these and even walk to them. So thank you very much and please keep Malibu fun.
Thank you, Paul. Who do we have on Zoom? No applause, please.
It's two raised hands. First is Ryan.
Ryan, you there?
Ryan, you're unmuted.
The process for TUPs is currently being reconsidered by the city. So the CUP process is not the correct process. I want to also step back and say there was an exaction by the Malibu West Homeowners Association back in two thousand nine for a vehicle easement across the parcel. And I think it would be best if- I think it would be best if that can be confirmed, and I would suggest Elizabeth recuse herself for her own benefit, I don't think it's necessary for any action tonight, but that is a very real nexus between the homeowners association, which I guess your husband's on, and this shopping center applicant that's before you tonight for vote and approval of a modification of their building entitlements to their property. So, please ponder that, and I don't know if that also would apply then to Drew Leonard, but the CUP process being sought here is an intensification of use, and it's a densification as well because of the increased attendance allocation. Therefore, I would suggest you only consider, continue the status quo, and that would be not to increase on paper the number of attendees, I'm not sure anybody's really counting, and that the number of events at fifteen seems appropriate, and this needs to be and remain under regular permitting, because this could get out of hand. Shopping centers are tangible, they get sold, they get new owners, this may be our version of a Norman Rockwell moment, but that's the current configuration. Giving a carte blanche entitlement is not the appropriate way as an amendment to a CUP. I can understand, and I respect Ken Erlich very much on this, but that is not the appropriate mechanism for this, that is the sledgehammer approach to kill an ant, and there's the unintended consequence of this could change and morph and get out of hand, and other than it makes all the residents file for a revocation permit for the whole CUP, and that's not appropriate either. So, I would suggest no modification for lighting at all, it's not necessary, and that the events be either continued on a short-term or emergency basis, and maybe that can be done by the city manager in her last month, but this needs to go under the new TUP process and not by CUP. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Who do we have next?
Matt?
Matt, you there?
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, thank you for the, can you hear me now? Yes. Okay, great, thank you for the opportunity to talk to the planning commission, I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of Malibu West, and I think the only person so far that's spoken lives on Trancas Canyon, and I agree with the statement from the homeowners association, I also agree with Paul, that people really enjoy the concerts and nobody wants to stop them. I disagree with Councilor Erlich, in fact, I don't think he's being honest, because there is no barricade on Trancas Canyon, in fact, for every concert, there's almost always cars all the way up to Tapia, so this is not true, Councilor. Okay, so you said the same thing last year, it's not true. So, I really worry about sort of an unbridled permit that's irrevocable or difficult to revoke for the reasons that have been cited here already. Again, everybody enjoys the concert, thirty is way too many, and the impact in the neighborhood, you know, can be substantial with thirty concerts. And also, I think it shows intent when the owners of the market are even suggesting, the shopping center, sorry, that they want to put this on TikTok and social media, this is, you know, a direct indication of sort of what's intended here. So, the concerts are loved by people, nobody's trying to kill them, we enjoy them, we really like to see people happy in the neighborhood, everybody who said that, it's true, but it's unfair to sort of impose this kind of impact for people that are in the neighborhood and also on Trancas Canyon. So, I'd like to keep it as is and/or have some annual ability to sort of revoke this, you know, if it does get out of hand, and I think Ryan made a great point, if the shopping center changes hands, you know, the enforcement becomes reduced in some way, and by the way, Councilor Erlich, I don't see enforcement anywhere, I don't see anybody on Trancas Canyon, there's a little sign up there, it's not a barricade, just please respect the neighborhood, don't park above this sign, nobody sees it, nobody's listening to it, nobody is enforcing it from the market, so it's just actually not true. So, I'm for a status quo, and thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. All right. Do you want to rebut, Ken?
A couple of points, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'll be as brief as possible. Let me be clear as well, too, number one, neither Trancas Country Market nor Vintage Grocers has a TikTok account, period, nor is there any plan to get one. So, it's not as if we're doing a new revolutionary social media strategy, it doesn't exist. The issue is simply wanting to get the word out, we seem to get the word out, the community gets it, you know, we're not arguing that condition, we're fine. The other issue which I think is important to talk about is the somehow that we're not entitled to a CUP because a TUP is appropriate. We've been through this with the city attorney, with the planning director, with the community development director, and many, many others. The temporary use permit statute itself, or the ordinance, talks about indoor and outdoor entertainment and assembly events, including but not limited to weddings, fundraisers, retreats, fairs, festivals, and concerts. When not held within premises designed to accommodate such events, those require a TUP. This language about requiring a TUP, the word requirement doesn't exist in the ordinance itself, it doesn't appear in that section. The section says a temporary use permit may be issued by the planning director for the following uses, and then lists the uses that I just listed. So, there is absolutely a overlap here, and what, we can apply for a TUP, we can apply for a CUP, we're applying for a CUP and we think that's appropriate. In connection with the annual review and the reapplication process, you know, I've talked about these points, it's cumbersome, it's expensive, and it takes up your time. The enforcement issue about anyone in the community can complain remains open, the city isn't closed to community complaints, and if there are complaints about this series of concerts, we're completely receptive to those community concerns. I also want to apologize for stumbling over my own words when I said the word barricade. I think it's probably more appropriate, as I've seen it, and I was just corrected, it's more likely a placard on an A-frame or a series of A-frames across Trancas Canyon, I've seen them myself, no one's, we're not erecting a barricade, we're not, we're not in the middle of the French Revolution here, so it's, we're having concerts on Friday nights. So, I'm happy to address any other comments, let me just go through my notes very quickly. I don't have anything further, I'm happy to respond to Commissioner questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ken. All right, can I go ahead and open up the hearing? I actually like to go first, I have a couple of questions. Didn't we approve a CUP that had a sunsetting clause?
Yeah, that's correct, so the previous CUP expired on October first of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, so, last week, there was a concert that was scheduled because of the postponement of our planning commission hearing, that concert was canceled. The applicant could have applied for a TUP and gone ahead with that event, no?
No, so, the meeting was canceled, they had already obtained six TUPs, but they weren't covered for August first or August eighth, so they decided to cancel it, and that was a result of the planning commission being postponed, so they weren't accounting for them not having a CUP. So, once we advised them that they had exceeded their TUPs, they canceled that, those events.
What were the, Ken, question for you, what were the TUPs for that you used?
So, the TUPs, another, let me answer the question directly in one second, but you triggered another thought that I overlooked, TUPs require thirty-five days' notice, so they really limit the applicant's flexibility and ability to sort of schedule and cancel. We canceled because out of an abundance of caution, we didn't want to go against the community or the commission or the city staff and have what could be labeled an unpermitted event. So, after consultation, we canceled ourselves. So, to directly answer your question, there are two events allowed per TUP, so we scheduled our TUPs as a belts and suspenders action, knowing that we were coming before this commission for a CUP, and we did not have August first or August eighth covered under the TUPs because we thought we'd have a CUP by then issued on July twenty-first when we were canceled. I hope that answers your question.
It does answer my question. Well, let me just finish one more thing, I appreciate you giving clarity because city staff and the planning commission received quite a bit of blowback because of the cancellation of the last meeting, which we took the blame, and staff took the blame for the event being canceled last weekend, and it was the shopping center's decision to cancel it because of further?
Hundred percent correct.
Okay.
Staff didn't cancel. Simply because they did not have the TUP for those dates. Correct, and we did not want to be characterized as having an unpermitted event because we've been down that road years ago and don't want to go back there. Great, that's awesome.
Can I, can I ask, it was only canceled two weeks, if it was only canceled two weeks ago?
The reason why it was canceled was because our meeting was canceled and we were supposed to have this held in the end of July, which would have, they would have already potentially received their CUP, been able to have the events in August.
That's not true.
Wait, wait, okay, everyone, we're gonna, that's your?
I'd like to comment. Okay, just so the public knows, it takes thirty, I think it's thirty-two days, but it may be thirty-five days to get a TUP. TUPs are issued per event, not two events, okay? And you're limited to six TUPs. In this case, because it takes thirty-five days to get a TUP, our cancellation of the meeting had absolutely nothing to do with the fact that they did not have TUPs for those events, absolutely nothing to do, they never applied for them, and they could not have gotten them in time for those events. So, this thing about because we canceled our meeting, it affected anything. If we had had the meeting and granted a CUP, there's a ten-day appeal period, and if that appeal is done, it extends, so they could not have held the events if we had had the meeting. So, it has absolutely nothing to do with the city, the fact that those two events happened.
Okay, point very well taken, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay, so, let's move on, that happened, and it was, it was what it was, but we have questions, and I did hear what Ryan said about recusing myself, I feel that I can be completely impartial, and my goal is to find a balanced way to protect the community and still allow us to be a community and celebrate together in a way that also protects us, so I feel very competent in being impartial, so I'm going to not recuse myself, that's what we need to do.
I have a question, Stan.
Go ahead, John.
There's, I think, some confusion of about how many events, if this were passed the way it is now, how many events could be held? And it was my impression on the first reading that you got fifteen events plus six TUPs. This is asking for substantially more than that, correct? It's more than, more than twenty-one events?
No, so the CUP will only authorize fifteen annual events.
But?
If they wanted to get TUPs for something separate, unrelated, they would reserve the ability to do that.
And that would be for six events, correct?
That's correct.
Up to.
Up to six, so that's, that's a CUP for fifteen and six TUPs.
That's correct.
Okay, then why does it say every three weeks in the summer?
That would just give them the flexibility to apply or hold them.
Those three weeks, it's a maximum of six, not a maximum one every three weeks, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's been a lot of confusion, now I want to...
Can I, can we just get a little clarification on that? I just want to make sure I understand, so if they wanted to do two events in one month, would that be allowable?
Yeah, as long as it falls within that one event per every three weeks.
Well, you say they wanted to do two events in, not every, in one month, they did one in two weeks.
Well, there's four weeks in a month.
Correct, but it wasn't, it wasn't, I just want to understand what we're working with here, so, is it one event every three weeks, or do they have a choice to use their six TUPs wherever they want between Labor Day and Memorial Day, basically?
Right, so the CUP has those restrictions, right, one event every three weeks, but then they could apply for a TUP to cover another event.
Yeah, I also want to remind the commission, we did pass a TUP ordinance recently that is in effect until May thirty-first, and so for the events with two-hundred-and-fifty people or less, there's a more amount of those, so what DVA is talking about is the over two-fifty events, over two-hundred-and-fifty people events, that they're limited to six per year, and I believe they have one left for this year.
Yeah, and they have already been granted, so that would cover the last two weeks of August.
So, they only would, if approved, they would only be given these fifteen events through the CUP, plus whatever they have left for the under two-fifty and under ninety-nine.
I have a, I have another question for Ken. If you have more than three-hundred-and-fifty people, or as it stands now, more than three-hundred people, how do you control that situation?
We would, we would limit the attendance, we would frankly ask people to leave, or not allow more people in, or I mean, my, our goal would be to control it so it never gets above that, because we're doing hourly counts, I mean, the center does hourly counts, you know, someone's a skeptic behind me and saying, huh, I'm saying, the center does hourly counts, and I'd also like to clarify, and Kelly, please chime in, that the city's current TUP ordinance says you can have one event over fourteen days, so this is exactly how, when we get, when we submit a TUP application, it covers two summer concerts, or two concerts for the proposed period, so that's, and that's on the ordinance now, anyone could take advantage of that, we're not doing anything special.
Okay, clarification?
Go ahead, Skylar.
Well, like, among us, I don't really have an objective objection to them asking for three-hundred-and-fifty people, I've attended many of the events, they seem like they do a very good job of controlling it, I very much hear the concerns of Matt who lives up on Trancas Canyon, I would, you know, is there a way for us to limit it parking above a certain point on Trancas Canyon on those event days, do we want to even get into that? I don't really think so, but, you know, that's kind of where I'm at, I'm just curious to hear from you guys about the number, if there's objection to that or not, or we have consensus on that.
What I think we should do is we should take points and try to get findings for those points, and then we could take it from there, so we could...
I think we can make the findings that the community enjoys the events.
I don't think we can make that.
You don't think we can make that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, because I have several questions about that, the staff, we have, and Ken said there is no objections, or maybe it was Paul Grisani, we have letters, and we have the association writing a letter, the association objecting, okay? So, there is not universality on approval, okay? That is not a fact, okay? The other thing is, and I have a question of DVA, is you state in the, in the staff report that there's fifty-four extra parking spaces, does that include the parking required for the shopping center?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so there's fifty-four spaces, and that fifty-four spaces is supposed to handle three-hundred-and-fifty people.
The fifty-four spaces was in surplus of?
Of the shopping center. Shopping center needs, that's six people per car, okay?
The majority come from Malibu West.
It doesn't matter, it's six people per car, and so we have to be cognizant of parking. Obviously, there isn't enough parking if there's a problem on Trancas Canyon Road. If there's parking in the parking lots, then Trancas Canyon Road would not be parked on, so that's one thing I want to consider, and when we consider the amount of size. The other thing is, Ken reported that they didn't violate anything, but in this last CUP, we granted, we required a sheriff and a city.
We had code enforcement there.
We had code enforcement there, they reported over three-hundred-and-fifty, over three-hundred, okay? It's right in the staff report at page two.
Okay.
Okay, so, there was an excess of what was allowed. Now, if we, my problem with dealing with that is, we had observers there, and they said there was an excess, it never got reported as a violation, it's just there was an excess, I don't know how that got reported, but it got reported, it's in the staff report. So, part of what's proposed here is to get rid of the staff guy, and to get rid of the sheriff, and leave it all up to the shopping center. I'm gonna have a problem with that, because you cannot enforce anything in Malibu. I'm gonna have a problem with that because you cannot enforce anything in Malibu unless a city person reports it. Essentially, that's the way it works. So I'm gonna ask, when we get to that thing, that we have at least a sheriff or a city staff member because somebody is gonna be responsible for compliance.
Well, we have the code enforcement, that's the staff. I have a question for staff, though, in regards to this. So we gave an annual CDP, CUP that expires. Can, is there a way to renew that annually and have a sun, continue to have a sunsetting CUP that could somehow hit the consent calendar instead of requiring a full-blown hearing?
And then for that question, I'm gonna let our city attorney handle that question.
You could, but I would not advise that because it's probably gonna get polled and your intent to put it on the consent calendar...
I'm trying to make it easier for the applicant.
Right, but it, you either have the annual or you have the permanent. Putting on the consent, it would be like a hybrid that I don't think is workable because, one, it can be polled, so it's, you know, has the effect of just being the annual. And so, I mean, you could, I just don't think it's the best.
But, but if you, I just want to say, if you did that, Kellen, if you did that and there were no issues, because I think what we, what we're concerned about, what we're concerned about is this is great right now. It's fabulous, it's phenomenal, we love it. But i- if it got out of control, we want to make sure that the community has the power without a whole bunch of rigmarole to pull back.
Rebecca?
Excuse me?
Everyone, Rebecca, please.
I would also say, I mean, I'm happy to take correction, but I believe our code currently requires that a conditional use permit is subject to public hearing with a 21-day advance notice. So an item like that cannot be part of a consent calendar.
I, I know this is probably nothing for the applicant's resources, but what is the fee for an annual renewal of a CUP?
It's, it can be costly. So we're talking about a few grand just for planning, but there's obviously fees related to environmental health, all the different departments that need to review. There's all the updated reports that need to be done, so they probably need to update their traffic and parking analyses. It, it can be costly. I was, I was gonna recommend, if I could, maybe a condition about reporting. I heard one of the residents say annual reporting and with like a clause for perhaps revocation if there's issues with the, with the event. Is that something, because then it's not as, it's not requiring the...
I think that what I'm hearing from the public, I, we, we understand that there's businesses in the shopping center that really, really require these events to help them survive. We're trying to appease everyone right now.
Can I make a comment? Number one, a consent item, you cannot discuss, okay? It's not a hearing. You have to convert it to a hearing.
I, I think we got the answer to that. He's, he's giving us an alternative answer.
But there, there can be. Talk about expense, okay? You're authorizing 15 events that you don't have to pay for, other than your annual fee, okay? Each one of those is $700, as I remember, okay, for a TUP. So you are actually saving money by doing the annual CUP rather than getting TUPs.
So another follow-up question in regards to that. What is gonna be presented to City Council in regards to the final TUP ordinance?
Well, it was already adopted, so you're talking about the permanent TUP ordinance? That's still up for debate. I think the direction from the council at this point is to see how this temporary ordinance goes and see if we want to use it as a model potentially for the future. But for right now, we're just kind of seeing how the temporary ordinance...
So this is like an emergency thing for Palisades Fire that...
Yeah, to help businesses recover.
Yeah, you realize it's 20 per month, I think. Okay, it's a huge number because of the Palisades Fire.
It got changed to four per month.
Okay.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's, it's big. So I think what we have to explain to the audience and understand ourselves is that CUPs are forever. In the history of Malibu, a CUP has never been revoked in 35 years.
John, we...
Okay, and the reason, main reason for that, one of the main reasons, is it's virtually impossible to get anything before the Planning Commission by a public complaint. It must be a staff complaint, okay? I can't walk up there and say, my neighbor's house fence is too high, I want that hearing. Can't be done, okay? So we have to look at the practicality. The other thing is, because it's good forever, unless we put limit it, we don't know that 30 years from now, there aren't 500 condos on the Trancas Field or 1,000, okay? And, and you may laugh at that.
Real quick, we, we can't condition this on future conduct, so we have to avoid...
No, no, but we have, we must.
Wait, 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 John?
Let me finish.
You can't, so...
No, John, we're not, we're not gonna go down the rabbit hole of what could happen in the future that has not even been a proposal.
No, 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 it's not a rabbit hole, it's being foolish.
Legally, we cannot condition this and you cannot be discussing what may happen. It has to be the facts on the ground that we have today.
You are saying that Coast Highway cannot be expanded because we can't condition on it that there may be more people living in Malibu?
I have a way to go forward here, John.
I, I've, I've told you what we have to do here, what the rules are, that's the law.
Planning plans, it doesn't, isn't one...
Commissioner, that's, that's the law, we talked about this last time.
I really want to try to keep this thing on track here. Do you want, are you looking to make a motion to deny?
No, I'm not, I want to go through and make it reasonable.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it as conditioned.
Okay, I'd like to make a sec, I'd like to make a secondary motion.
May I please remind the audience, we are not going to applaud or...
I'm gonna make a second motion.
Make outward noise.
I'm gonna make a second motion, it's gonna be, we're gonna go, I'm going through them one at a time, okay? On condition one...
Well, no, let him finish his question.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay. On condition one, let's see, these conditions are, okay? Section three, condition one, in the, in the top paragraph, it says, it says...
What page are you on, huh?
I'm on page two of 11 of the resolution, okay? And I'm gonna want to add, after the word 15, I'm gonna put one-day events, because the intention of this is, these are one-night events. That's two of 11 in the Resolution number 25-60.
It's the first paragraph under section three.
First paragraph under section three. My motion is to add the word 15 one-day events because the rest of the whole thing is conditioned on ending at nine o'clock and...
Scott, Skylar, are you interested in amending your motion?
You couldn't say 15 one-day events, there's nothing wrong with that.
Okay, there's one of them. Okay, the second one is on condition six. The la, the second to last paragraph. Let's see, the condition six, I've gotta find this. These are numbered weirdly.
You gotta tell us where you're gonna be, John.
He's on the top of page three of 11.
I'm looking in the top of page 42 and it doesn't line up.
It's three of 11, you're at, you're...
I'm three of 11, condition six. And that's not the one, eliminate condition one. Oh, there's the hours of operation, they buy on the next page. Well, the, as a way I understand it, and I don't need to put this in unless this makes it clear, is there's a paragraph in here that says if the, it closes when the, when the shopping center closes. But there's other conditions that say six to nine.
That's on page five of 11, number 11.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm gonna delete that for now. Number five, page...
Okay. So, so I just want to say, you know, it's been brought to my attention over here that, you know, we could do a CUP, which is only five years. So we could put a time limit on it that's more reasonable. So rather than have it continue in perpetuity, we could grant a five-year CUP with certain allowances. Or, I don't know, can we do a three-year CUP?
Can we do something smaller, like a two or three year?
Yeah, what about a three-year CUP?
Okay, and, and that would be, I, that's condition 51. And my proposal was, the CUP shall be reviewed and considered for extension or change every three years after the issuance of the, of the ordinance, or whatever this is called, CUP, upon the review of compliance prepared by staff and subject to condition 52, okay? And that just says that every three years, two years, staff prepares a staff report saying, these have been the problems, this is the blah, 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 and manatorily reports to us. The way it's written today on 51, the staff, the planning director decides everything. And we need to decide everything because we need to hear the public. The planning electric does not hear the public. So that's, that's, my proposal is a two-year review from staff report. Now, the only way that can be produced is, is to have a staff person required to be on-site. Right now, we have a staff person and a cop, okay? Yeah, and the old one, the one that expired.
Right, I agree that there should, it should be required and continue to be required.
Okay, and I don't think we need to have them pay for a cop because you can call a cop if something goes crazy, okay? But you need somebody to report the actual facts to the planning commission.
I, I agree with that.
I think a cop should be present.
If you guys read in there, condition 25 clearly states that.
It says may, it doesn't say should.
Yeah, I don't think that, I think condition 25 needs...
It doesn't clearly state that.
Needs to be altered to be clear.
Yeah, so I think Marnie had a recommendation to change one word on that, right?
Yeah.
You would just delete the first part of that and say a member of LASD or a city employee will be present.
Will be present and not at the request of the community development, just that a member will be.
Yeah, so delete the first part of the sentence and require that.
Do you want a cop or not a cop?
Yes, the cop.
Okay, so a member of, it should read, a member of staff and a...
I think it's really silly to do that. You have a large city, to tie up resources for that, I think is foolish. But that's my personal opinion.
I don't think it's fair to the applicant to have a...
It's not fair to the applicant, it's not fair to everybody else that does an event in this city that's that amount of people that you do not require a sheriff to go to, so that's not fair.
Well, that's straw poll, I think we should take on that because...
I mean, it's a publicly noted event that people come to, that children are running around while their parents are sitting and talking.
You're right, my kids go there and they feel totally safe.
I always think someone's gonna get hit by a car or kidnapped.
What, what this might require is the applicant would have to pay for over outside services, like for mov, for movie shoots.
Probably like $1,500.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want, I know, we don't...
The goal is to support the businesses, to support Trancas and to support our community, but have some triggers in place to also protect the community, so...
So is the straw vote that you do not want a sheriff, but you want a staff person there?
I definitely want a staff person there, is that something that can be done?
Of course, we get it last time.
That should be required.
Okay.
Well, then who's the staff person and what are they doing to monitor?
You can take somebody from community services.
Yeah, no, they, they've done that before.
Last year, we had a code enforcement officer present.
And then how is it monitored?
They report any, and D, feel free to weigh in, but they report any issues that are going down or they kind of just walk around and make sure they're following their conditions of approval.
And if there's a situation, they call the police, is that correct?
They report it, yes.
Is that report the same as call the police?
Well, if there's a, if there's a situation that escalates to police action, yes, of course, we would call the police, but there hasn't been to date, so...
I have to also preface that when a city official calls the police, they'll come running. It's not like a private citizen calling the police.
And I just don't want us to pick who it's going to be or what department they come from.
That's up to staff.
Yeah, but if we say a staff member, obviously, it's gonna be someone that's the correct person.
Okay.
So the amendment is to word on page six of 11, number 25, that to word it so that a staff member is required to be present. Yes, Rebecca?
Can we achieve that by simply striking at the request of the Community Development Director and beginning that condition with a member of the LASD or a city Malibu employee?
Will be present.
Must be present on-site.
Must be present. Now, I, I question, I would...
The word is shall be present.
I would suggest that you do not say LASD because LASD doesn't report to the city. They don't know our codes, they don't know, they don't know the, if they are secondary...
All right, so have it say a staff member and strike the sheriff's conversation.
Right, right.
I have a question about number 47, page nine of 11. During the months of June to August and on the events that are hosted on holidays and, and holiday eves, the TTCP included in the TIA prepared by the KOA. What does that mean?
It's a temporary, temporary implementation plan?
TT.
TT.
Those were traffic reports that were prepared, but the applicant's...
We're gonna get an answer. Oh. Sure, what's the TTCP?
Yes, we, we prepared a traffic, a study and the traffic consultant recommended certain measures to be implemented during the busiest summer concert months. The main ones being essentially crossing guards to help people across the street make sure that pedestrians aren't, you know, going across the road unassisted. And those traffic, traffic crossing guards have been present every week this summer. It also, you know, requires certain signage postage to help direct people away from the, the neighborhood and towards the parking lots for the shopping center.
Can you tell us what a TTCP and a TT, TIA and a KOA means?
I think it's Temporary Traffic Control Protocols. And the TIA is the Traffic Impact Assessment, thank you.
And then what's a KOA?
KOA is the name of the consulting firm that prepared the traffic study. And the, I think the traffic study was attached to the staff report, so you can find all of that in the staff report.
So needless to say, they didn't just like will and nilly start doing this.
This is a resolution, either spell out what it means. Ten, five years from now, nobody's gonna know what a KOA is, okay?
You want some acronyms in there?
I, I want the acronyms out.
Okay, we'll spell them out then.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do.
Now, just, just so everybody knows, the reason why we are requiring, and I assume it's still in here, two traffic guards is the parking lot C in the original CUP was restricted for employees only because of the danger of crossing Trancas Canyon Road, especially at night, because of the curve right above the parking lot. And so those have to be in there, or you're gonna kill them.
Yeah, no one's debating that one.
Is it in there? Okay.
Wait for John, I gotta call you next.
So if you want to...
Marnie, next.
Oh, I wanted to make a motion to approve it with those changes.
Well, I got more.
You have more changes.
We do our job correctly, okay?
Wait, listen, you wanna go, or?
Just wondering if we were at the finish line.
Okay.
Okay. On number 24, and this may seem nitpicky, but it's, and if you don't want to be here, you can leave. No comments from the gallery, please. Number 24 says, says et cetera, okay? Et cetera is not a legal term and it, and it should not be in there. And I don't see... And I don't see, et cetera means anything.
Okay.
Okay, can we eliminate that?
Add it.
Okay.
So maybe it should then read, flyers posted at the shopping centers or local newspaper ads, period.
Yeah, we don't have to say Malibu Times, but we are not saying social media, okay?
We're just grateful that Ken doesn't have a TikTok account that we all have to look at.
But
Okay, just straw poll, everyone's good with that change, we're striking et cetera, and we're striking Malibu Times and calling it local media. That's what Skylar said.
And do we need, you can tell me, Kellen, do we need to say no social media?
No.
Okay, but if social media is done under that paragraph, it's a violation.
I have to, I have to speak up on this one. The biggest source of information regards to who's playing on a particular night is probably like Nextdoor, or, you know, so.
Any social media that says Lady Gaga is gonna show tonight for free will attract 5,000 people.
We have that with
Okay, it will happen, so that's why we can't have social media.
Okay.
We, then we need to, I think, define social media, because I'm, some people said Nextdoor qualifies, some don't, so just for the resolution
Across the board, it gets no social media.
We need to know what social media means, that's what I'm saying.
Non-print advertising.
So not Nextdoor?
That's not print, yes.
If, if there's the votes for that, yeah.
Well, I have a question.
I just wanna be, go ahead. Sorry, Commissioner, I just wanna be clear, because non-print advertisement means that they can't post on their website. We don't mean that, correct?
It's not printed, their website.
They have a website, yeah.
Well, we're also saying that they can, they can have an ad in the paper.
They can have an ad in the paper, and people can read the paper, but people aren't reading the paper in Santa Monica.
So I think the issue is we don't want, what I'm hearing is, we don't want specifically social media, right? So to Kellen's point, we probably just need to define that so we don't over-limit other forms of media that we may be allowed to use.
Use Webster's definition of social media.
I mean, there's Facebook, YouTube, Instagram, and TikTok are probably the biggest. Are there others that
Right now. Tomorrow morning, TikTok could be outlawed and it could be called
I guess what, John, we can't worry about tomorrow morning when there's something new that we don't know what it is.
We're trying to get clarity for this to move on to the next one, so it's what the five of you want to do.
I want to just point out that there's probably 500 social medias, okay? And if you can attract people outside of the neighborhood, outside of Malibu, electronically, it will be used. That's why we are saying, don't use
Why don't we say with the intention
We're gonna readdress this in three years if this gets out of hand, and I think
And you can say social media with the intention of attracting outside of the community.
That will be a reason to
Well, Nextdoor, as I understand, Nextdoor is a local, is a local app, right? And you have to be a local to engage in that app.
That is not true at all.
Not at all.
Nope.
I don't, I don't, I'm not on Nextdoor, so I don't
Okay, well, Nextdoor, most of Nextdoor is outside of Malibu. If you post on the Point Two Nextdoor channel, you're getting Westlake and Thousand Oaks
I think, I think we're getting away from trying to create the condition, let's
Social media, we'll use the word social media.
Applicant, does that make sense to you? That's, that's where maybe
Could I, could I suggest, event advertisement shall be limited to the community level, i.e. flyers posted at the shopping center, Tranqus Country Markets website, and local newspaper ads, would that suffice?
Lovely.
That's good enough for me.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Advertisements by the owner, we don't want to get in trouble if the band or, you know, inadvertently posts, we can only control so much.
No, if you advertise in the LA Times, you're in trouble.
You guys are speaking for yourselves, not the
Okay.
So Rebecca's definition works for folks, okay? Let's keep going.
Okay, and we got rid of et cetera.
That was important.
Well, it is, because
Okay, we're on the next one, let's keep, keep it moving, we got a lot of folks here.
John, you have 300 people sitting here, so.
And we have an important item.
I know.
Let's keep it moving.
Well, I'm moving, okay?
Don't address it, just go.
We can always change our agenda.
Commissioner, we have rules of decorum, we gotta keep, keep it moving and not address the public, please.
I, on number twenty-nine, I would like to get rid of the words permanent installed under lighting. And if you read number twenty-nine, it says no permanent installed lighting shall blink, flash, or bolt. That means that if it's temporary for the, for the event, you can come in with strobe lights, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Straw poll, yes or no, folks?
I say no to that, I think we're
No.
The item should just read, no lighting shall blink.
That's my, that's my proposal.
Doesn't need to say permanently installed, that's it. Okay, next item.
Okay, is that accepted?
Rebecca, hold on, Rebecca needs a
Yeah, you got three right there.
I mean, Tyler, can you correct me if I'm mistaken? I believe that is part of the dark sky ordinance, that language?
Yeah.
That's fine, though.
But we can remove it if they want to.
I think what John's getting at right now is because it's a concert, there may be temporary stuff, and he doesn't want to see that at all. So the point that he's making is that no lighting, doesn't matter if it's permanent or temporary.
So we're striking permanently and installed?
Yeah.
I have a question for the applicant, I'm so sorry. Some of the bands do have a light shining at them, correct?
I believe, I don't know if there's a light shining at them as opposed to, the stage is backlit as well. I could find out if that's, if that's exactly what you want, Mr. Chair.
That's immaterial here, this is blinking and blah, blah, blah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, number thirty-four, let's see. Okay, number thirty-four is Yes, I, I think it's a mistake to put in the name of the person who you can report to, okay? The staff changes all the time in town, and I would just eliminate Dan Garza and his email. It's not part of a
Straw poll, yes, everyone, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Rebecca, you got that? Thirty-four, environmental health?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, number forty-three. Under forty-three, no candles, flames are permitted. I would add the word pyrotechnics, okay? I'm not kidding you, that's what they do at rock concerts.
That's fine.
Okay, add the word pyrotechnics to forty-three.
Rebecca, do you have that?
I, I do not have that condition.
Okay, fire department, forty-three, add pyrotechnics as a prohibited item.
Okay, number forty-five. That's where we're adding, one, one staff member shall be required to be at the event.
It's in twenty-five, but we already have that.
Forty-five is different.
Okay, at least two traffic control staff, okay. It says two traffic control staff members. Now, what does staff members mean?
Staff, it's the staff of the Tranqus Country Mark.
Okay, then we should state that, because it
It's already a condition of the KOA study that they addressed.
Nobody knows what a KOA study is, and it's not in this resolution.
It is. It's required that they follow the KOA study that's included in the staff report, and we're taking out the acronyms and putting in the full words for you. So it is definitely in there.
Okay, well, I'm trying to make things plain. If you're, if you're the staff member there, does he know what the KOA study, is he getting a lesson on that? Number forty-seven.
That's the one we just addressed, the KOA acronyms.
Yeah, okay, they're gonna spell out those acronyms.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, number fifty?
For clarification, earlier in the report, we have spelled out the acronym TIA, so we would be spelling out the acronym TTCPs here.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Forty-nine, is that what you said?
Now, on fifty, I have a question. How does this get referred to the planning commission? It says without consent of the property owner, if the planning commission finds its use, is that at the annual review, or is, how is that?
That can be at any time.
Okay, how does it get to us?
That's actually allowed in the code, and it says here that the planning commission, if it has cause to believe that grounds for revocation or modification exist, the planning commission should hold a public hearing. So that gives you all the power, if you hear from the public, of a nuisance or of a problem with their, they're not complying with their conditions, at any time, you can request this comeback before the commission.
So we have to vote to ask the staff to put it on the agenda? Is that how it works, is that what I'm asking? Okay, so it can be done, we can put it on the agenda, okay?
So therefore, we don't need to put a limit on it, we can just, if we want to hear it, we can bring it back.
And that's always been
That would be the smartest thing to do, John.
We need a limit because
We don't need a limit.
I've been on the planning commission a long time, and nobody has ever done that.
You have never, ever asked for us to hear one of them, so when you do, we can do
Nobody has ever asked because it's never happened, okay?
So what's the condition request?
The condition is, we don't change anything on that.
Okay.
Okay, fifty?
Keep on moving.
Fifty-six, John?
Just, just as a point of clarification, there are resolutions revoking conditional use permits, numbers fourteen zero zero one, fourteen zero zero two, and sixteen eighty-seven in our resolution index.
Okay.
It is unusual, but it has happened in the history
Okay, once every ten years.
All right, next.
Number fifty-four. I, I wonder, and this is Kellen, you can ask me, should we be using the word substantially, or should we just eliminate it? On number C, substantially is an amorphous term.
Yes, that's a legal term, I think we should keep it in because, yeah.
Okay, and then fifty, fifty-five. We're gonna change fifty-five to, where's fifty-five?
To two years.
To two years. And and I, and it's also, it should say before five years, it should say again, every two years, not just the first time. The way this is written, you do it one year and five years.
I think there's been a little, there's been several different ideas of how this would work up here, I want to make sure everyone's on consensus, and then if someone wants to ask a question to the applicant, so they can speak.
Okay, well, the way I'm proposing it is, after the word again, we go every five years instead of the first five years, every two years instead of the first two years, okay? So what I'm on, staff shall inspect the property one year after approval, and every two years after approval.
I actually think that it was to say, if you're gonna stick with this, is that the staff shall review the event conditions or the event reports, because if I go, if the staff goes and reviews the site, like, they're not necessarily reviewing an event. So the, the staff shall review the event reports for the previous two years and verify compliance.
Yeah, and they're gonna do that in the other condition that says they have to report to us.
I'm curious to see what the applicant's thoughts are on that process.
I am too.
I have a question, what are your thoughts on that?
My, my thoughts are that this type of reporting that is being contemplated by this dialogue appears fine and reasonable. What the real concern is, if we're gonna have to continue to renew traffic studies, noise studies, parking, et cetera, that gets well into the six figures every two years. And if the city wants that, then it should be uniform throughout every CUP. So my, my concern is, if it's simply reviewing the reports that are being done, or if we need to report, or if you're reviewing what staff has done, it's completely reasonable.
I think it's, the way that I interpret it is that it's us reviewing our reports from our staff, nothing to do with the applicant.
Right, but, and, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tyler, if they come to us, the staff comes to us and said, we had a riot last week, we can change the rules and say, you gotta do it, or they say there's too much traffic, we can change the CUP in saying, we need a new traffic study to reset the
Yes.
requirements.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, because it's not like you can bring it back at the next meeting, so it comes back as a CUP with modifications, so we need to notice it for 21 days, it'd be like coming back with a new CUP.
Correct, if we ask for it, okay, and then, let's see.
I apologize, I am lost the thread there a little bit. What are you suggesting is the requirement?
Let Tyler take a stab at it.
Do you have it?
I
Go ahead.
Well, basically what is, is that staff shall review their reports, the event reports for the previous two years, and verify compliance with the conditions of approval.
And we already, and this may not be necessary, because we already approved, or preliminarily approved, that the staff comes to us biannually.
Well, we didn't, we did not do that yet, we just discussed it, we did not give that specific direction, we did not.
Okay, then we have to go back to that.
No, we can add a condition on here, if you want to do that, or modify this one to say that, we're at the place now to do that, I believe.
Okay.
So what I'm suggesting is that you have staff review the staff reports and bring back to this commission, I guess, some, you know, report on the compliance of those two years into this.
Yes.
And then again, five years into this.
Two years. Now
Rebecca?
Could I clarify, could that take the form of a presentation to the planning commission so that we can make it a fairly less
I'm gonna add to that, and I'll see if it goes. If the planning commission determines such actions necessary as in paragraph fifty-five. In other words, at the bottom of this, it says the community development director will determine whether, whether a CUP is brought back to the planning commission. Eliminate that whole sentence, starting with the community director.
You're basically deleting fifty-six.
No, I'm deleting the bottom half of fifty-six and replacing it with, if the planning commission determines such actions are necessary to change the CUP.
I think that that's said, I think that that's said elsewhere in here, that
That's in your
Yeah, but this one says the planning director decides. This one says the planning director decides, I'm changing it to the planning commission.
So again, you guys already have that authority under the code, and again, through this, a condition of approval, at any time, let's say you have a first event and they violate their conditions of approval, you hear from the public, you guys can request this CUP come back at any time.
Yes, but what we want to put in is an, this is going to expire in two years, it's, it's got an end to the CUP, and we
I don't know if everyone's agreed to that.
I do not want this to expire in two years, at all.
See
Do you want it to go forever?
I want it to go for forever and be reviewed every five years, but you guys want it to be reviewed more frequently.
I'm totally against that.
Before, I wanna, I wanna just understand some things. First of all, how, what I would like to do is I would like to have it come back every two years, but I do not want to impose a very cumbersome, painful process on our Tranqus, you know, center. And I want to make sure that we have a streamlined process, and I want to understand from staff how we can achieve that.
Can I answer that? The way I'm contemplating this is, staff comes to us in two years and presents, here's, here's what happened, okay? At that time, we determine if we need to change the CUP.
I hear that.
And whether we need a new this or a new that. Otherwise, you don't need anything new. If they say it's cool, it's cool.
Cool, so can we do that?
Then that would be a permanent CUP with a two-year
Review.
Review, where you can invite testimony and add conditions if
But it
It includes revocation, though, right?
No, you can revoke if there's, if there's
That would be through your separate power to bring the item back if there's problems, but through the, the annual review as your, or once every two-year review, you could potentially add conditions if necessary, but not revocation through that review process. But if there's problems, you would use your power through the code to bring it back, and that would include revocation. You always have that power.
So every two years, we can say, staff, you got a problem, was there, was there over 500 people, was there a death on the highway because of drinking, or et cetera, et cetera? And then we can say, well, or there's We bring it back, and we can revoke or condition, we can change.
Rebecca, go ahead, please.
I, I would just like to clarify that at the point of the presentation being provided, it would not be something that we would be advance noticing, it would not be noticed as a public hearing. it would not be something that we would be advance noticing. It would not be noticed as a public hearing. So it would be the commission directing staff to bring the item back for amendment or revocation.
Correct.
So
Only if needed.
In practicality, again, if they violate conditions at any time, the planning commission can ask the CUP to come back anytime regardless of this. This condition is that every two years, there's a report prepared by the staff, probably going to be on consent calendar because it's a reporting item, that tells you how the events of the last two years went. And if the event is not satisfactory to the planning commission, at that time, the planning commission can ask for the CUP to come back for revocation or modification.
But I would rather, and I'm going to ask Kellen this. We are not allowed to do a lot of debate on a consent item, okay? And ask a lot of questions. So I would rather have it come back as a regular item of review.
It can go on the consent. When you pull it, it becomes a non-consent item and you can discuss it.
Then we can make a motion to adjudge.
I still think that we should spread it out further. I don't think we should do it every two years. I think we're just going to bog staff's time down, but that's my personal opinion. I think we should go for three or four years.
Can we vote on that?
Yeah, let's do a consensus. Is that okay, Drew? I mean, I'm for two years.
Okay.
Because
Everyone, we'll call you up if we have questions, please.
Call you. In fact, it's closed.
May I ask all audience members to please be seated unless you've been invited to the podium?
There's no speaking at this time. There's no speaking at this time. Sorry.
I have a question. What are we approving, fifteen summer or the summer in all three?
Excuse me. What we're approving is they've asked for fifteen events during the summer and then they're allowed to do six events, one every three weeks based on a TUP during the regular year, not the summer season.
We need to move on, sorry.
The public comment period has closed. We are not accepting comments from the audience unless directed by the chair.
Pat, please, you're going to have to sit down.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Pat, you have to sit down.
No one else here has the opportunity to speak.
You can't.
We've got to keep this moving.
What is Pat asking is, and this is what I asked before. I'm asking the question. Are there 20, 21 events a year? Or what they had proposed, which we were going to change, I thought, is you get the six TUPs or whatever is allowed by the city. And we're not changing it to where they get more than everybody else, one every three weeks.
Okay, so I can recap it. The way this motion is going is for their initial application for the fifteen events and then the Labor Day to Memorial Day. That's where we're at right as of this moment.
Okay, and the reason this got brought up is there's confusion over whether they are getting extra TUPs by saying every three weeks. They are only getting six right now. Okay, that's clear.
Okay, I like, I think, do we have a second for Skylar's amendment? Oh, Rebecca?
I would also like to mention earlier, Commissioner Mazza asked for an amendment to section three to specify that it's, these are referencing fifteen one-day events. That specification would also needed to be added to condition number two. We also have a couple of spots that I believe require amendments to indicate that the use for which the CUP is granted has ceased or was suspended for the period from Memorial Day through Labor Day after the start of operations, except in the case of natural disaster that happens. I know in fifty-four B, but I feel like they're somewhere else.
I think we can just say staff can make those corrections as necessary, consistent with the conditions we've already amended.
And what was the first question you had, Rebecca?
She said, "We're changing section two."
I'm just noting as another section of the resolution, it's condition of approval number two.
As a one-day event, like you asked for.
Yeah, and the reason, we're agreed, it's
Correct, we're not changing that.
It's not 14 days or whatever.
It's one day, we're just adding it twice instead of once as you proposed.
Okay.
I still think that we should space out the review period. I think it's cumbersome on staff, but if I'm
I mean, I think
side of that, then that's the way it is.
I think that it should be a very simplified report. I don't think we need anybody, you know, laboring. If it's been an easy time and there's no issues, you know, that's
You could also do two years at the start and then make it longer beyond that.
Right, we could do that at the time.
Two and then three.
I would like to stay with two years because we are not going to be bringing each event up every time there's an event and that gives you a time when it is reviewed.
Let me ask you.
For example, we have, we had a review period on the nightclub down there and it never happened.
Can I ask this of you guys? Do we want to set that review period now so that you're hearing that in June? Or do you want to hear that at the end of the summer? Do you follow me?
Let's do it before Memorial Day.
Do you want to hear it in May? Like the first meeting in May?
Yep.
The way the review is proposed is two years, two years after this passes, okay?
I understand that, but I think that it's prudent on us if
We want to avoid what just happened.
Exactly, and the way to do that is probably actually to do it earlier than May, like do it in April.
Because it starts, the concerts start on Memorial Day, which is start before the season starts.
So we should start in April.
So why would we wait until April if it's over in Labor Day?
Because if you, if you need to correct it, you want to be able to correct it
We have time to get it together.
And have time to deal with it.
I think that it should be two years after the summer season. So the two years would start ticking at the end of the summer and then we go after the summer, after the summer season in two years.
But we're calendaring when our review date.
How about the first November, the first meeting in November?
So you go first meeting in November 2027.
So it gives them eight months to clean up whatever problems for the next summer.
Okay, that's acceptable.
That's a good, I think that's a good idea.
And then every November thereafter, or every other November.
Yes.
Every two years, yes. So November will be the
Good with that, Rebecca?
Yep.
And then I know that it was brought I'm reading the last version of that condition and trying to see how to modify. You had staff shall review the event reports for the previous two years and verify compliance with conditions of approval and provide a presentation to the commission with their findings beginning
November of twenty twenty-seven and every two, every two years thereafter.
I just wanted to let the audience know that we're going to probably take a 10-minute break as soon as we finally vote for this and then we're going to move on to urgent care.
I have another, so Ken, I know that you brought up your, the possibility of taking out the non-use where is if you didn't, for some reason, you didn't have any events for a period of time, then your CUP was automatically canceled. I mean, I would like to know if we have consensus to remove that because
I think we should remove it.
Okay, I agree.
I think maybe we should make it a year, but
No.
And for the record, that would be condition of approvals fifty-three and fifty-four B.
If it stops for five years, we ought to re-review it.
That's in the code, so it's
There's going to be massive outrage.
So we can remove it as a condition, but the code would still say that, so.
So what are we doing? I'd rather have it a year because if they don't have
Kellen, are we better off having it in there or not in there?
Leave it in there and keep moving forward because it matches our code, so we can't go beyond what the code says.
Okay, that's fine. Do we get a roll call? That's my motion.
All the stuff we agreed on, did we ever agree on how many people?
Yeah, 350.
I mean, I would give consensus for 350. Does it, do we have consensus in that?
Yeah, 350 is consensus.
Personally, I think 300 is enough. It's already pretty full. That's personally, I'll sign off on whatever, but I, since it usually is about 350, but does this mean it's going to be
We have three votes.
More like that. I think 300 is appropriate for that space.
I think you should
Or maybe a second.
I believe, I believe John is second. Am I correct, John, that you're now seconding Skylar?
Now that we have consensus in all this, I'm consenting, instead of my motion, I'm seconding his motion. I just want to point out that this is limited to the lawn area.
Yes.
Try to put 350 people in the lawn area, okay?
Well, they have occupancy in the restaurants.
Chair, I think we need a roll call.
And may I, may I please, for the record, state what I believe to be your amendments in an abbreviated form and let me know if I've missed anything before we cement this. Section three and condition two specifying that these are 15 one-day events. Condition 25, a City of Malibu employee shall be present on-site for the duration of any of the events. The applicant should be billed for the staff member's time. Condition 47, spelled the acronym TTCP. Condition 24, modified to state, event advertisement should be limited to the community level. Flyers posted at the shopping center, Trancas Country Market, website and local newspaper ads by the owner. Condition 29, remove permanently installed from the condition regarding lights. Condition number 34, removing a specific staff member and email address. Condition number 43, adding pyrotechnics as a prohibited item. Condition forty, let's see, condition 55, modified to state, staff shall review the event reports for the previous two years and verify compliance with conditions of approval and provide a presentation to the commission with their findings beginning November 2027, continuing every two years thereafter. Modifying conditions 53 and 54B to state the use for which the CUP has, was granted has ceased or was suspended for the period from Memorial Day through Labor Day after the start of operations, except in the case of natural disaster. Or, Kellen, could you please, I'm sorry, Assistant City Attorney Marts, could you please confirm whether that, you're recommending that we not modify that condition?
That is my recommendation, not to modify that.
And does that reflect the amendments?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that matches my notes.
That was amazing, by the way.
That was amazing, but just for clarification. If we have consensus and we allow it to be 350 and there does become a crowd problem
That can be reviewed.
We can always change it.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, then I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner Peake?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Cammons?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're going to come back in nine fifteen. Please don't talk to anyone. Thank you. Can everyone please sit down? Can everyone please sit down?
May I ask audience members to please take your seats, the meeting is about to resume? I'd like all audience members to please be silent, take your seats.
All right, we're gonna start the meeting up, thank you Rebecca. All right, next up, we're gonna be doing urgent care, which is five C.
Yay!
No applause, please. All right, do we have any disclosures?
First off, I've received care from urgent care, it's always been very good care, so thank you to all the doctors there, and we've received a lot of community support on this item. I did not visit the site in the immediacy of this hearing, but I am familiar with it and am familiar with the adjacent building and the plan that has been presented.
I want to say that I, my wife was basically saved by Dr. Pike and Dr. Katz, so I appreciate that.
No disclosure.
Okay. I'll say, yes, I've had severe emergencies and my wife has had severe emergencies and very, very grateful for the care that we get at Malibu Urgent Care. Okay, Elizabeth?
So, I'm just gonna, Dr. Katz is my mom's doctor and really adore him, and Dr. Plotkin saved my daughter's nose when she fell out of the car and got a bunch of gravel in it, and she's beautiful today, and I love urgent care, so. And the other thing is, I did meet with Doug Burge on this project, and I am familiar with it, and that's my disclosure.
All right, let's go ahead and, I think we're gonna have Kellen give a little comment before we start this.
All right, so we're gonna hear from the applicant, and then everyone under the law has the right to give their public comment, however, in the interest of time, if you are willing to waive that, we are going to do a mass stand-up if you support, or stand-up if you're against it, so that you can show to the commissioners that you support it. But again, if you want to speak, you certainly have that right, but for people that just want to say they're here and support one, we've gotten your emails, or if you're against it, we've gotten those emails, they've been all read by everyone up here, so people don't have to reiterate what they said, if you would like to, you are lawfully entitled to your three minutes, so back to the chair with that.
Okay, so, we're gonna go ahead and start off with the staff report on this? Who's presenting this one, Tyler?
No, Richard Greenbauer.
Okay, Richard, remotely, you there?
Yes, can you hear me, Chair Leonard?
Yes.
All right, good evening, and the item before you tonight is Administrative Plan Review twenty-four thirty-two, Conditional Use Permit twenty-four oh six, the urgent care remodel and expansion. Next slide, please. The slide here is just an overview showing the location of urgent care, which obviously everyone is aware of and knows the location, so, well, next slide, please. And I've provided a more zoomed-in profile of the site, and it consists of two lease areas, one for the existing gas station, and the other lease area that is, includes all the other space with the urgent, existing urgent care, as well as the expansion that's proposed, and the onsite improvements for the area. Next slide. With that, I just wanted to briefly go over and give the project background, the existing urgent care has been operating since nineteen ninety-four in a twenty-three-hundred-square-foot building, and on May third, they submitted an application for the Administrative Plan Review and Conditional Use Permit to expand into the vacant United States Postal Service Building, which is sixty-six-hundred square feet in size, and allowing additional medical procedures to be conducted onsite. Along with that, they are reconfiguring, creating some additional parking space, some open space areas, and I'll get further into that in my presentation here. Next slide, please. It's up. Sorry, my slides are not lining up here, but as previously mentioned, the urgent care has been operating since nineteen ninety-four, no urgent care facilities or services will be provided at the existing facility, it'll just be utilized for physical therapy, and all urgent care facilities in the existing facility will be moved over to the expanded area. Next slide, please. Just for context purposes, I just want to provide a remodel of the exterior of the building, an illustrative showing the design and how they would remodel the existing building into a new facility. Next slide. And then here, I've got the slide to show the exterior site improvements, starting with A, which is gonna be a new southwest parking lot, so that will actually enhance the parking on the overall site. Area B is the enhanced landscape healing garden open space area, again enhancing the open space on the air, on the site, and providing additional area for the patients to travel during their time at the facility. On C, we're looking at the southeast parking lot, landscape planner areas, and total improvements around the entire north side to the southeast side. And then finally, in red on the bottom, you can see a new sidewalk along Malibu Road on the south side, which will connect from west to east and create a pedestrian access as you go to the east towards Pacific Coast Highway. Next slide. As far as correspondence, as everyone has stated, there has been a lot of correspondence, I think to date, where we've had a hundred and one letters of support for this project, no letters of opposition, and then there's been two correspondents from the applicant and their team to make themselves available for the commission to review the project, come onsite, and that is all I have received to date. Next slide, please. With that, staff's recommendation is to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution twenty-five sixty-three, determining the project's categorically exempt from CEQA, and approving APR twenty-four zero three two and CUP twenty-four zero zero six to allow the remodel and expansion of the Malibu Urgent Care and inhibit site improvements. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for any comments.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go on to the applicant's presentation, let's go, Andy?
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair Leonard, thanks for having us all here tonight, and there's an amazing project in front of you, so I'm just here to basically introduce our team, we have our architect team here from Burge, and our amazing doctors from the urgent care are here. First, I wanted to thank Richard for putting together the staff report for us, he's done an amazing job, Tyler's been amazing, Renika who's not here has been unbelievable, but above all, I want to thank Yolanda who was here, but I think she left, she's been amazing, and you guys made a great decision to make her the new community director. And with that, I would just like to pass this off to Jennifer from Burge Architects for a brief statement on the project, and then Dr. Katz will do a quick slide presentation showing the new benefits of this amazing center.
Thank you.
And then we'll retain any of that.
Okay.
Hi, Commission, my name is Jennifer Hopple, I am a partner at Burge Architects, and I'm honored to be here today to present to you the urgent care expansion. This is a really rare opportunity that we get to present to you, something that we truly feel, and I believe everyone in this room knows, is a truly great asset to the community. I don't think there's anyone here who would not benefit from this. Our team, we have our team here, we have Doug, we have Jesse, and on behalf of our entire office, we are very excited about this project, this is one of those rare opportunities where we could get to present to you something that has total support from what we can tell. Within minutes of meeting Dr. Katz and Dr. Pike, you can tell that they are absolutely passionate about this community, and within the weeks and months since we've been working with them, you can tell that the community is just as passionate about them and about this project. We, I can talk about the architecture, I'm happy to talk about the architecture if there is any questions, but I think no one explains this project better and the need for this better than Dr. Katz, so I'd like to leave as much as I can to him.
Thank you, I've been waiting for this moment a long time, I really, really appreciate of your time, thank you to the members of the Planning Commission, to Malibu residents, to the friends of Malibu Urgent Care. My name's Dr. Dan Katz, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and my partner, my incredible partner, Dr. Lauren Pike, and I'm very, very excited about this project. Working in Malibu is a privilege to us, it's, to me, the most important thing I've accomplished in my life, is becoming a physician and serving this, this community. Every day here brings challenges with it, and what this project seeks to do is to overcome the barriers that we are faced with every single day. I want to start by just a brief oversight of the healthcare situation in Malibu and why I believe this project is vital to our community. So despite eleven thousand residents and millions of visitors per year, we do not have a hospital here in Malibu, and the nearest emergency departments are located fifteen miles away, accounting for traffic and the time of day, that can be anywhere between half an hour to an hour away and sometimes more. We have made the commitment to staff our facility with board-certified emergency physicians three hundred sixty-five days a year, that's been the case since nineteen ninety-four, the clinic has never, ever closed, not one single day. We're currently able to treat and evaluate about ninety-five percent of patients that come in through our facility, and we're very proud to say that we are delivering emergency-level care at significantly lower prices compared to traditional ER visit, and with a much, much shorter wait time. Topographically, looking at Malibu, this alludes to what I just referred to, which is, you have hospitals that surround us, certainly you can go up to Ventura, you can go to Los Robles, you can go to West Hills Hospital, and you can go to Santa Monica. But I believe that given all the different natural disasters that this city is subject to, we need to have a facility that is able to function independently without having to transfer patients out of the city. If you look at the EMS data from a couple of years ago, these are the reasons why paramedics were called out to the scene on a nine-one-one call. And I won't bore you with all the different chief complaints, but I will say that the majority of these, about thirty percent, were traumatic injuries, and I will also say that a review of these indications would clearly point out that we can easily take care of many of these, including traumatic injuries, abdominal pain, chest pain, extremity injuries, allergic reactions, so on and so forth. Malibu urgent care is not an ordinary urgent care by any stretch of the imagination, we're staffed with highly qualified emergency physicians and a staff that is able to very safely take care of patients with complex presentations. Our clinic has equipment that is generally found in emergency departments only and not in urgent care centers. Last year, we treated almost twelve thousand patients, a large percentage of those were pediatric, about thirty percent of those were elderly patients above the age of sixty-five. We are able to help patients avert about eight hundred visits to emergency departments by providing care locally. We take care of complex lacerations, complex abdominal pain, we reduce dislocations, there are many things where, many presentations that if you were to walk into a traditional urgent care, you would be turned away almost immediately at the door and told that they do not have the capacity to take care of that. We also have a community mission, and we're here to support the Malibu community in general. On August seventeenth and nineteenth, just coming up in a couple of weeks, we will be conducting our second cardiac screening for high school athletes, we are screening them, this is a free-of-charge service with EKGs and cardiac echos to make sure that they don't have any cardiac defects that would predispose them to sudden cardiac arrest. We have provided free care to patients, just today I had a patient who walked in with an allergic reaction from a bee sting, and we didn't ask about insurance or anything, brought her right back in and administered epinephrine, which was in this case life-saving to her. We have participated in meetings with the Malibu School Safety Committee, provided training for stop-to-bleed courses to schools and to the boys and girls clubs, and we've provided lectures to various sports clubs. During the recent fires, we made a decision to keep the clinic open, we asked permission and were allowed to go through the barriers, and we were running on backup generators and Starlink. We were the only facility in Malibu to remain open because the neighboring UCLA unfortunately lost their power, and as such, we were tasked with taking care of anybody with an acute healthcare emergency in Malibu. That included people who had to evacuate and left without their medications or whose medications got burned. We were able to provide treatment to the first responders who needed help and who needed embolizer treatments, and something that really warmed my heart is that we would have patients that would come to charge their phones or get a cup of hot water, or a cup of coffee, or use our internet, and they knew that this would be a meeting place where they would be welcome. I think the community has recognized the central role that we play, this is an article from the Malibu Times, and we're affectionately known as sort of the community emergency department, even though that's not exactly what we are. So those are all the great things that we currently do, why in the world would we need a new facility? The main reason that we refer patients out of our emergency, our, excuse me, our urgent care is because we don't have advanced imaging, and again, I'm gonna call on a case, on a patient that I saw just earlier today, an eighty-two-year-old woman who had fallen and hurt her head, and came into the urgent care without a complaint of headache, but just with a big bump on her head, not on blood thinners. I recognized the need to scan her, I referred her to an imaging center, the study was scheduled for two hours after her discharge from the urgent care, and I was called within thirty minutes of her arrival there that she had a large subdural hemorrhage in her brain, and she required transfer via paramedics to the emergency department. That presents a significant delay in her care, and that's an increased risk for obviously an adverse outcome, seizures, et cetera. This could have been averted had we had a CT scanner here in Malibu that takes about a minute and a half to perform the scan and make a decision on what's right for this patient. This need was recognized a long time ago, we tried to see whether we could utilize the current space, and that was not possible. Dr. Pike and I started looking around town, and we needed to look no further than the facility that was just outside the door, that had been abandoned for a couple of decades. The new space will allow us to put in advanced imaging equipment, which we feel is vital, and will allow us to perform more comprehensive workups of our patients and provide higher-level care here in Malibu. And the sky's the limit, I've already started having some discussions at the state level to see if we could present, we could introduce a stroke program here in Malibu so that patients could receive early intervention. This is, you've been presented with the overall plan, but essentially, this takes us from about twenty-three-hundred square feet to sixty-six-hundred square feet. I'm very excited about the floor plan for the facility, with a triage area, nine patient rooms, CT, MRI, x-ray, lab, a small pharmacy in order to be able to administer medications, and this is a very abbreviated proposed equipment list, that includes all of the equipment that we hope to have at this clinic. Typical patient room and some of the advanced equipment that we hope to have for concussion screening for our young athletes, and this is a picture of the exact equipment that we have ordered and hope to install should this project be approved. I want to speak from my heart for a second, the picture on the left is Dr. Pike, providing care to a patient years ago, she started working at the clinic when her mother, Dr. Jill Ferguson, ran She started working at the clinic when her mother, Dr. Jill Ferguson, ran it. She was a teenager at the time. And she started in the front office and went to the back office. And now she's helping run the clinic. I was recruited by the other founder of the urgent care, Dr. David Frankel, when I was a resident. And someone happened to snap a picture of me suturing a laceration in 2003. We've been part of this community for a long time. We've been taking care of patients here for a long time. I'm now seeing children of the patients that I took care of when I was a resident. We're not a big extra urgent care or a corporate. We're just your hometown doctors. And in fact, I had a patient tell me when I took over the clinic five years ago that I'm no longer an ER doctor. I'm a small-town doctor, and that's how I feel. I feel really attached to this community. I feel very lucky that we're supported by the Friends of Malibu Urgent Care. And if you've walked into our facility, I'm sure you've seen this tree and another one adjacent to it that has the names of all the donors who have felt very strongly about the mission of our clinic and what we do. So I'm hoping that you will support our project. I think that this will greatly enhance care that we're able to provide here in Malibu. And I'm very grateful for the time that you've given me to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. You have two minutes for need for rebuttal, if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
All right. As Kellen said, you know, we have quite a few speaker slips here. Let's go ahead and start with David Kramer.
Why don't we start with the everyone standing up that wants to show support, excuse me, but that will forego speaking?
Everyone wants to speak. Okay. Okay. Does anyone not have support?
All right, thank you, everyone. We appreciate it.
So we're going to go David Kramer, then Shelley Kramer, and then Burt Ross, okay? So you guys be ready to come up.
If any speaker wishes to cede their time through show of support, they may choose to do so at the time their name is called.
If your name is called, just say "pass" and we will pass.
Okay.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Go ahead, David.
Okay. You're not going to hear anything from me that you haven't already heard. But I've waited this time and I'm going to have what I, say what I want to say.
Absolutely.
First of all, thank you for your service, Planning Commission. I'm David Kramer, and I'm here with my wife Shelley. We are 37-plus-year Malibu residents. You, the Planning Commission, are all longtime Malibu residents. And most likely, you or your family or friends needed Malibu urgent care. We are here to support them. Malibu urgent care gives back 100%. They are the real lifeline to helping us stay alive in our beautiful Malibu country. We give enormous gratitude and thankfulness. We support Malibu urgent care 100% in their endeavors to expand and move into the old post office next door. Once at these new facilities, they will be able to expand their diagnostics using state-of-the-art CT and MRI scanners, labs, beds, all of which will greatly enhance their ability to diagnose and treat serious conditions without having to leave Malibu, which we believe is important to our community. Please support Dr. Katz and Dr. Pike and their exclusive board-certified emergency physicians in approving Malibu urgent care proposal for top state-of-the-art emergency facilities in Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Shelley.
Hi, I'm Shelley Kramer. I'm going to talk really fast because I need to tell you everything that they have done for us, saving our lives. When we first moved here, 37, 38 years ago, I was driving home to my house to hook up the phone system, waiting for the man. My two big golden retrievers were in the backseat. I had to stop short, right in mid-Malibu, and they were going to fly forward. And I had a glass terrarium in the backseat. And I pushed my hand back and cut my hand open. I was four months pregnant. Malibu Urgent Care was right there. I went in, I left the dogs in the car, and they took care of me. They called my OB to see if I should get a tetanus shot. He said, "No way." They bandaged me up and I went home. That was a lifesaver. Next, when my son was about six years old in the early '90s, he was cutting the head at school. Took him to urgent care. They stitched him up. We went home. Thank God for them again. Next, when we returned from a trip last year, I had a giant red sty on my eye, never had before. Went to urgent care. They said, "You have a chelazion. You have to go to a special doctor in Beverly Hills to have it taken care of." Referred me. I went and thank God for them again. Then when I returned after the sty issue, the insurance company and the fire department made us move our plants and our hose out from under the house. I wasn't paying attention. I was carrying things. I tripped over the hose and fractured my patella. Went to urgent care. They sent me to Marina Del Rey to have surgery. Thank God for them again. This year, we took our son to Dr. Katz for his chronic headaches every morning. He sent us to get an MRI, to get blood work, and to get a workup and a sleep apnea test. Again, thank goodness for them. We're in the middle of this right now. Much of the traveling to all these other facilities would not be made if we had the facilities here, the MRI, the C scan. We totally love Dr. Katz, Dr. Pike, and the whole team. They are so sweet, so accommodating. And they always follow up with a phone call the next day to find out how we are. Most doctors don't do that. Let's do everything we can to help keep urgent care with new space, new equipment, and helping us stay alive in our beautiful country of Malibu. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Shelley. Good evening, Burt.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, my name is Burt Ross. And let me be honest, I was a young man when this meeting started. This is the first time I have come to a Planning Commission meeting, and I do so because I can't think of any applicant more deserving of a positive response from this body. Urgent care, Dr. Pike, and Dr. Katz are treasures that we cherish. And let's be realistic. I made a very stupid mistake. I did not have dinner before I came here. I am absolutely starving. And if I pass out, there are only two people, not here, not there, group people, who will revive me. Seriously, my daughter, who's a doctor, gave birth to our grandson via cesarean operation at a major New York hospital about a half a year ago. And she was having severe pain when she came to visit. And she went to urgent care. And it turned out that some of the stitches had not dissolved. And Dr. Pike, we thank you very much for taking care of our daughter, the doctor. When I live back east, there were three hospitals within a 10- to 15-minute drive from where I live. There are times when it literally takes over a half an hour to get from one end of Malibu to another. Many of us who live here depend on Malibu urgent care. Malibu has a significant senior population, and that population is growing. Malibu urgent care is often our lifeline. I respectfully urge you to approve the application now. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Burt. So I'm going to call the next three. We're going to have Carrie Glassby, Bobby Leonard, and Elaine Johnson. I have a question. Some people did written comments on the back. Do I just hand those to the commissioner or...? Okay, thank you. So Carrie, are we here? Okay. Bobby Leonard? Would you like to speak? Elaine Johnson?
Pass.
Okay. Barbara Fish?
Pass.
Okay. Audrey Darren?
Pass.
Okay. Pamela Ulik?
Receive!
Okay. Suzanne Zimmer?
Okay.
Come on, we'll all go together.
We need to raise a lot of money.
We're going to... No, they're past-ish. Chair Leonard, thank you so much. Thank you all for your service to our wonderful city. We are all in support of Dr. Katz and Dr. Pike and the expansion of the urgent care. We love the urgent care. We can't imagine where we would all be without it. And we want to see it continue and grow because it is vital to our community. So thank you very, very much.
And can we... And I second that.
And can we do a wave? Everyone stand up because you've been sitting way too long. Come on, come on. Wave if you're in support. Feel like I'm at a Dodger game.
All right. Suzanne Zimmer?
Yes, that was me.
Okay.
Was I?
Yeah, thank you. Bridgette Daniel? Danielin?
I'm part of them. I just want to say something really quick. Thank you all for your time and patience. And I just want to say that Malibu has gone through so much. And what I think is this would be the most incredible first project to rebuild Malibu as a community.
Thank you. I want to thank all you, everyone, for waiting. We thought we were going to be a little quicker. We had some continued hearings tonight that we had to get through before this. And I'm terribly sorry that everyone had to wait. You got to see how sausage is made in Malibu.
Do you have dinner ready for us?
Yes. Paul Crisanti?
I'll pass.
Okay. John Schmitz?
I drove down here, so I'll say some, but I'll keep it really quick. First, I'm not here professionally representing this application. I'm just here as Joe Sidison. So I've been living in Malibu for some 30 years. And urgent care has took care of scorpion bites from being hidden in an Our Lady of Malibu shirt. I mean, look, the Schmitz kids are surfers. They ride horses. Yeah, we're regular customers. And so my eldest kids have all moved on. But I got the four-year-old, the two-year-old. Yeah, I'm that crazy. And so I think this is a wonderful thing. I've been trying for years to get this town organized, put an actual small hospital in town with an actual emergency room. And I'm still down for that. But until then, this is a wonderful facility. It has my unqualified support. Thank you.
Thank you. And do you want to do a rebuttal? That's it? Okay.
Could I, could you come up? You had two minutes to go, and you could have used them. I'd like you to use them telling us how we can, you can raise money and how people can give you money to get this accomplished.
Should we Dr. Katz?
Well, I would like to welcome them, these fine young ladies, back up then if they want to talk about raising money. Pamela? Dr. Katz? Couple minutes, real quick?
Is anyone here from the Friends?
Do you don't mind Dr. Katz?
No, no. Actually, what I intended...
I'm very grateful for this. Thank you very much. First of all, Malibu Urgent Care is supported by the Friends of Malibu Urgent Care. We have our president of the board over here, Nicole Elaf. We have one of our board members over here, Ms. Pam Ulik. And am I missing anyone? Oh, David Frankel, Dr. Frankel is also on our board as well. They are the ones that help raise funds for this clinic. The urgent care operates at a net loss. It has since it's opened. We would not be around without the support of the community, and we are grateful for that. We had a fundraiser back in October of 2023 that raised just short of $1 million. We had a $3 million anchor donation from the Coombe Family Foundation. We had another $1 million donation from a Malibu local. And we continue to receive donations on a day-to-day basis. They are currently being matched by the Herb Alpert Foundation. Mr. Alpert has given us a $5 million donation on a match basis. And I firmly believe that if we're able to fully realize this match, then we will be looking okay. Thus far, we've raised about $1 million of that $5 million. While we hope to have another fundraising event, what all of you can do is just spread the word that we are looking to complete this important project and that every single one of your dollars goes to the purchase of the equipment. So thank you very much. And again, we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you repeat the name of the foundation, please?
The Herb Alpert Fantation Foundation.
Okay.
So the, sorry, the name of, I apologize. It's the Friends of Malibu Urgent Care. It's a 501(c)(3). All donations are a tax write-off.
And they can call you to find out how to get ahold of them?
No, sir. They can contact the Friends of the Malibu Urgent Care because they are the ones that support us.
And how do they do that?
They can go online at www.friendsofmalibuurgentcare.com. Or they can just contact our clinic, and we'll give them that information as well. Thank you, Mr. Maza.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Is the hearing closed?
Hearing's closed.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to see the dais fully. Could you tell me, was that Marnie? Was that what you think?
Marnie, it was John and Marnie, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamens?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yep.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And my compliments to the hat.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out here tonight. Really appreciate it.
And if we could ask audience members to try to leave fairly quietly, we have another item to hear.
Okay. All right, guys. Everyone? Let's give them a minute.
Well, you can just call, say the next one is...
We have another hearing, please.
All right.
May I please ask audience members that are not staying on for the next item to congregate in the outer lobby so that we can hear the next item?
Thank you, guys.
Pam? Pam? Oh, Pam.
She's ignoring you.
Okay. Next up, we have 5A, which is... Okay, I got to get to the agenda here. Okay. Okay. Next up, we have item 5A, which is a coastal development permit number 23-021. It's an application for an interior and exterior remodel and a first and second-floor addition to an existing two-story beach house residence. The address is 31376 Broad Beach Road. Okay. Everyone? Okay. All right. Do we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. As noted, this is CDP number 23021, located at 31376 Broad Beach Road. Here's a vicinity map of the property along Broad Beach Road. It's connected to one of the private driveways off of Broad Beach Road. And here's just a closer look at the property itself. And pictures of the site as it is today with the existing story poles. This is the rear of the property off of the private driveway and just gives you a sense of the proposed second-floor addition as well. So the project proposes to construct a new 1,126-square-foot second-story addition with a... with a 168 square foot balcony. This is also an interior remodel of less than 50%. There's a new solar roof panel system, new second-floor master bathroom skylight, and new tankless water heater. Here's a look at the site plan. You can see the existing two-story, single-family residence on the left and the new second store, second-floor addition on the right in red. It's above the existing first floor and the existing attached garage. Here's the east elevation. And the portion in red is the new second-story addition, again, above an existing first floor and existing garage. And then, here's the north elevation showing you the curvature of the roof, which meets the minimum 3 to 12 pitch. And again, above the existing first story. Here's a look at the demolition plan for the first floor. There's a handful of walls being removed, with the major portion being the stairs that are removed in the lower left-hand corner. And they're being relocated to the other side of the house on the second floor where the existing master bathroom is. And here's a quick look at the roof plan, the solar panels and the skylights. And then, the view from PCH, you can see the story poles and the orange banding off in the distance. And then, as well, a view from Broad Beach. And you can also see the, the orange banding next to the existing homes. So, this project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15301a and e. And staff recommends the planning commission adopt Resolution 2564 and approve the proposed project as conditioned.
Realize that we did not do disclosures. Just go ahead and do that. John?
Last Friday, Marnie and I visited the project together and discussed it with the architect.
Same.
Skylar?
Last week, I visited the project with the chair. We met with the architect. I had some questions in regards to the septic and which not. I know that those were sent on to Tyler, but I did not get a response or Drew sent them, I believe.
Okay. Ditto to what Skylar just said. Elizabeth?
Oh, no disclosures.
Okay. All right. Do we, is Louise, do we have a card? Is Louise doing the presentation on this? Okay. Louise?
Hi, Chair, Vice Chair, and the rest of the commission. Thank you for staying and for hearing me tonight. I know we almost made it to the, to the 10:30 deadline. Thank you for hearing the previous item quickly. And I, I promise I'll be quick. Adam worked pretty well on this project, and he presented the case pretty well. I want to maybe just offer you a few more visuals, and then I'm here if you have any questions. So, if you can put the first page, Parker, please. Yeah. Ah, there you go. So, this is the, let's say, the survey. So, with this survey, so this is a typical beachfront property. That's why I'm here. And so, it's a CDP less than 50%. We, we are not an APR because we're adding more than 10%. And so, this is the property lines. The lot is 40 feet wide, which means that the side yard setbacks would be 10% of each, so four feet. But this side offers some specific conditions. There's a setback on the tidal, and then there's an easement, too, that are five feet. So, this is what we respected. Then, the front yard setback goes from Broad Beach. But there's a private road also with a tidal easement, which further restricts the area where we can develop. And then, there's the typical building stream line. And this was, this green area is where we could work. So, this is some drone shots. So, basically, it's an existing two-story house. The second story is towards the ocean, and we're going to fill in on the rear portion. They're the only place where we have room. And also, we have some, some views through the neighborhood to the east. It's a quick sketch. And this is, maybe a few of you appreciate the inspiration for this project. It's a photo that my sister took of me somewhere in Africa. I was about to get annihilated on a few sets, and that was the, the concept. So, it's basically a wave breaking. And, and also, the approach was the existing architecture was, belonged to another time. So, we tried to add and create some contrast, but at the same time respecting. So, it's lifted. Therefore, the existing roofs don't need to be demolished. And so, this is now in relationship with the maximum area that it can be developed. Adam went through this. So, this is how the, the first floor will look after the proposed interior remodel. And this is the existing second story. And this is what happens when we add the second story. If you see on the existing, there's like a double-height space. So, we just penetrate through that, and then we connect with the proposed new stairs. This is in elevation. Also, the peculiar shape of the wave is like a curved-shaped roof, which after discussions with, with planning, it is understood as a pitch roof. And still, we are much lower than the maximum 28 height. From the center of the adjacent road is a render section. And this is now, so you understand how it connects with the house. It's a view from the bedroom, a view from the rec room office space. And also, the way we were able to add up room was by removing one from the existing house. Therefore, the count for fixtures and bedrooms stays the same. So, that didn't trigger an upgrade on the, on the septic system. Another few things that I wanted to mention regarding the septic. We were also trying to, to propose a widening of the, of the private access road, which would have required encroachment into steep slopes, which require a variance. So, we were ready for that. But there was a last-minute finding that we couldn't forfeit the future dispersal area. And that's something that we had been told three years ago that we could. So, that's the reason why we are not proposing any variances right now because we just had to remove the retaining wall from the scope of work. But I want to thank the staff. I know that Lauren and Yolanda tried to make it work, but, but we couldn't. And then, lastly, so thanks to this photo, you see that, so this is the rendered image where almost all the houses around us are completely filled in with second stories. So, we're just filling a void right here. And hopefully, the owners can enjoy the house better. And yeah, if you have any questions, I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards or anyone online?
Yeah, there's one raised hand from Ryan.
Ryan?
I actually recognize the house. I worked on it, you know, for over a period of 20-something years. I didn't realize it was on tonight's agenda. I like the look of the house. I think it's going to be a terrible cellphone coverage if the roof is like that, but that, that so be it. It's, it's beautiful. There's technical ways around it. My hand was up for the prior item that was never called. And that was the main reason I'm hanging around the meeting is I wanted to make sure that your staff is aware of that. People who did have their hands up, I think there was nobody called who had hands up in support of the urgent care.
I take, I take partial responsibility. I did not ask, I don't think I asked if there was anyone online. I'm terribly sorry, Ryan.
My, my, my support is there for it, of course. But my concern was that we should have been talking about the building and the project and that the specification for backup power, whether it's both batteries and a generator, none of that was fleshed out exactly, and I'd hoped to have heard it. So, that was my reason. But thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Louise, one coming up? So, I'm going to go ahead and start with this one. I asked a couple of questions. Both Skylar and I had some questions. And we didn't get a response, so I had, ended up having to do my own research on the property. It was originally permitted in 1958. The original house was 1,600 square feet, 1,633 square feet. And it had a 1,000-gallon septic tank that still exists today. The property was remodeled in 1986. It was expanded to 2,731 square feet, still on the same septic system. The original fixture count in 1958 was 17 fixtures on the original septic permit. In 2022, when did you come onto this project?
2022.
Okay. Were you involved with the application to remove the one bathroom?
Yes.
So, was that removed as a precursor for this application?
Yes. So, the full story, too, is, and it was, it was going to be a phased project where we were going to do first the retaining wall and a quick interior remodel. So, for the interior remodel, they wanted to, to fix the bathrooms. And we found out that there was an existing count of, I don't remember if the number was 42 or 52 is dancing. So, there were seven additional fixtures that what the system could afford. So, that over-the-counter application was going to take care of removing those.
I'm so, so sorry. If you could repeat what you just said. I'm sorry, I could not hear at all.
So, there, there's another over-the-counter permit. I, I forgot the number that they, which they already took care of the fixture reduction.
Okay. So, what, here's my concerns about this. Is that we're going to be, everything is clean on this, but we're going to be approving a 4,600-square-foot home on the beach with a thousand, existing 1,000-gallon septic tank? And I, yes, it meets the code, but it doesn't seem right. And that's my concern. And I would strong, we do not have the ability to condition a septic tank on this project. But I think that your applicant, it would really, really be the best thing if he did upgrade the septic system as part, as part of this project.
It's actually, the, the plan is going to be, but we just learned, it was like two months ago, the issue with the retaining wall. So, the condition to be able to do the retaining wall was to upgrade the system. But we knew this two months ago. So, we, it's been already three years. By the way, during these three years, we had to pause this application because they were doing the over-the-counter. You cannot have more than two applications at the same time. So, we were able to restart this application, right? And then, last minute, we, we learned that we couldn't do the retaining wall. So, the plan is to move forward this and eventually upgrade. But you know, upgrading a system, there's always a lot of risk. You never know if you're going to percolate. You never know if you're going to have enough room for everything. So, they really want this addition. I made it, so it works.
You understand my concern about a 4,600-square-foot home on a thousand...
Yeah, we have a land agreement.
A thousand-square-foot septic system, a 1,000-gallon septic system from 1958.
Yeah. The, the septic systems in Malibu, they, they look at three things, right? Number of bedrooms, number of fixtures, number of fixture units. They don't look at TDSF.
I understand. I have one more question in regards to that. If we could turn to... I don't know if you want to put this up on the screen, the first floor. We could either do the demo plan or the floor plan.
A101. That's the one.
Okay. This is the demo plan. It shows it on here. So, for, you show it as two bedrooms, but what you're doing is you're reducing it down to one bedroom downstairs, correct? Why do you have a hallway and two doors into one bedroom? Access doors to one bedroom? Is that because you're planning on upgrading this to two bedrooms in a future date? Can we make it, are you open to making a condition to modifying this floor?
To remove one of the walls? Well, yeah, but it's, so here's the thing.
It seems like the entrance, the doorway should be moved to the entry hall and get rid of the second door.
I agree, we could remove one of those two doors. I don't, I really don't.
Yeah. I just felt, you know, as I said, this is a clean project, but it, it, it doesn't smell right.
The code doesn't have anything related to how many doors you can have into a bedroom. But I, I agree, it looks weird, and I think it was, I don't care. Like, let's remove that, that door.
Based upon that, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
And I forgot, there's a support letter from the neighbor next door.
We saw that, yes.
Quick, quick question. I've seconded it, but I assume that there's no, if they pump it twice in six months, it gets reported. And there's no...
There is, there is an open operating permit on the septic system. The property has been used, since these people have bought it, it's been used as a rental income property. So, and they have been, I don't know if it's been registered as a short-term rental, but it has, it does maintain a septic operating permit.
Yeah, no, okay. So, it doesn't have any violations because I've got a 1949 septic tank that's still working fine. Okay?
On 4,600 square feet?
It's 500 gallons. Okay, I'm seconding the motion, saying the motion is, includes the removal of the second door, whatever it is.
And, and modifying it to the, the entrance to the bedroom from the hallway, from the entry hall without a hallway there?
Both are from the hallway. Which one you prefer? The one to the right or the one to the left?
What he's saying is he wants to move the entry up.
Yeah, we're not, we're eliminating the hallway.
So that you would have access to the...
But there's the little HBAC closet right there that I think is better to be accessed through the hallway.
You just eliminate one of the doors.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my second.
Any further discussion?
I think it's a really cool room.
If, if I could ask the case planner to put that into a condition of approval language for me?
Remove one of the doors between bedroom 01 and 02 on the first floor and modify the associated hallway entrance to the bedroom.
One last thing, Louise. You guys are planning on coming in with an application after you get this permit for a septic system.
I, I don't know if I would be the applicant, but...
You kind of indicated that that was the, that you couldn't do it because you have two applications.
He indicated that if he goes for the retaining wall in the back, that he has to do that.
Actually, the neighbors really wanted, right? The neighbors remember me, last year, I came with another project to push that retaining wall. So, like, all that street is non-compliant. So, they really need to find a way to widen that access road. So, I know that a bunch of the neighbors want to do that. And my clients, they really want to do that. But I told them, look, you can move forward with this application. And while we go through construction, you, typically for septic systems, it's like a year. And it's a CDP, but, but you guys typically approve them if we don't ask for any variances, right? So, by the time that we're there building, it should be okay for the septic.
Okay. I, you know, I think...
What Drew's saying is that he would really like to see an application to upgrade the septic system and to get that variance in front of us sooner than later.
Right. But we can't require that, so let's vote.
No.
What John said, yes.
I'm sorry for giving you a hard time, Louise, on it. It's just, you know, this is on the beach and, you know...
For a while.
Yeah. That, you know, usually the, these type of projects are the mechanism to upgrade a septic system, not to avoid doing a septic system. And we really like to try to get as many of these systems updated as possible.
I totally understand.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Cammons?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yep.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm over adjourned and honor the new city manager.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Good job, everyone.